Good evening. Today is October 17th, 2022. It's always good to see folks out there in the seats and we are glad that you're here tonight. We hope that you find your time profitable and we appreciate you spending some time with us tonight. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the United States. We begin with a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge. We're also going to have what's called a solemnizing prayer. That is not for you guys. It is for us. We're going to have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor come forward. And what we do every other week, well, throughout the month, we take very seriously. And we look for wisdom where we can get it. And so we're going to have our chaplain come and pray for this board that will make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone in Rowan County. Chaplain Taylor and Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Thank you Commissioners. Where do we come to tonight? We come to in behalf of our county Commissioners, your Lord. We thank you for the time that's already been spent in preparation for this meeting tonight. Pray Father, you give them the wisdom they need to make the right decision tonight. Thanks for their dedication, love for Rowan County, your Lord. Pray blessings upon them tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain Taylor Senior. We've got Junior here tonight too, so we have to be a little more specific.
Amen.
All right Commissioners, the agenda is before us. I don't know of any changes. Anyone have any changes to the agenda? All right, then do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided? All right, motion of second. All in favor say aye. We have the minutes of October 3rd have been provided, given a chance to go through that. Any corrections to the minutes?
With approval.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. Consent agenda, items A through N been provided for us. Had a chance to study those. Anyone have a motion to approve? Thank you. In a second. All in favor say aye. All right, now we have some special recognition. This is always a fun part to our meeting. So Commissioners, if we'll, you know, we didn't get a mic or anything, did we? That's okay. Do we have a mic? Oh, we'll look in there. We say microphone and April just appears out there. Commissioners, how about if we go out front? If our chaplains will come forward, we'd like to honor them tonight. Hello, okay. So, once a year across the nation, we have what's called Clergy Appreciation Day. And so with our clergy that we rely on a lot, these guys are here. Every time we have a Commissioner meeting, even if it's a special called meeting, within 24 or 48 hours, they are here. And I tell you, the weight of the county commission, everyone would say it seems to get heavier and heavier. And we just want you guys to know that we appreciate you doing your job for us and for praying for us. And it's not just us that you do this for. You have a ministry across the whole county that's spread to the state for officers and shield a badge with prayer and we appreciate that. But there's not a time that we sit down to review agenda and start poring over things that we have to decide that we don't feel the evidence of you praying for us and praying for wisdom to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the county. So, Michael Senior, just a little something for you and we appreciate you. I know you're training your son up in a good way. But then Jim's got something for Junior there. And so we just appreciate you taking your time. This isn't, do we pay him to do that? Oh, we don't pay you to do it, do we? Yeah, so you're here and spending your time to do this and we really appreciate it. So if y'all give them a round of applause.
We can, we can. Yeah, we need that. We consider it a privilege to pray for the county Commissioners. Not just at the meetings, but every day of the year, we pray for you. And we appreciate what y'all do. We really do. God bless you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Back to April.
All right, thank you.
You know, I forgot Shane came up to me before the meeting started. And I know we've got folks here tonight that may be here for item number five. So Shane said he didn't mind because I don't know that anyone is here for his quasi judicial hearing. So he didn't mind if we swapped that. Is that okay with you guys? So we can get to the other one. So I'll make a motion that we swap items five and six and we'll, no, four and five. Four and five. Okay, second. All in favor say aye. All right, so then we'll go ahead and have Aaron come forward then. Yep, Aaron, you good with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See if we get, wait for this pop away here for a second. Think we're good to go here. So we have case 00522, a request from RR to CBI CD for the placement of mini storage warehouses. The owner is the Sutton Children LLC. It's located at the 3700 block of Mooresville Road, parcel 463A289. So this is approximately a six acre parcel currently zoned RR. And it's right there at the corner of Mooresville Road and John Rainey Road. Just some pictures of the site. This is looking at the site from Mooresville Road. Currently, it's mostly a wooded parcel with an open field on there. Now, when you take a look from John Rainey Road, it's pretty similar, mostly wooded and it's got some fields on there. If you take a look at the top right photo, you'll see there's like a little small building on there. And that building is approximately where the property line is between this property and the two adjoining residences on that side. So this is located in area two of the Western Area Land Use Plan. And area two recommends mixed use development throughout the area. Mooresville Road slash NC 150 is identified as a major thoroughfare. And the plan recommends highway business off major thoroughfares in North Carolina highways. The Western Area Land Use Plan also recommends considering building appearance, design elements, landscaping for new businesses. And conditional districts rezonings offer the chance for the board to add those kind of enhanced design elements in the form of mutually agreed upon conditions. As far as consistency with the requested zoning district, the CBI district is generally appropriate in areas identified as highway business along NC and US highways, community, regional potential development nodes, commercial corridors, and existing commercial areas. So if we take a look at the compatibility of the uses, the current zoning RR is mostly a residential district. You'll see on there, there's uses that are permitted with an SR. Those are rural home occupations. So those require the owner of the business to live on site. And specifically in the RR district, those businesses are limited to a 2,000 square foot building. The requested district, the CBI CD, the only thing that would be allowed in that district is mini warehouses and specifically what's on the requested site plan. So back in July, the planning board saw this site plan here as this was the original development requested. Some things to kind of highlight with this one is that they were originally requesting six buildings. Four of them were indoor mini storage. And then two of them were the traditional unconditioned mini storage that we're accustomed to. Along with that, they were looking to have an access off of John Rainey Road and an access off of Mooresville Road. The site was going to be paved with asphalt. And they were also going to have some storage available for boats and RVs. The total square footage originally proposed here was 112,000 square feet of storage space. And at that planning board meeting, it did ultimately wind up getting denied by a vote of 42. So after hearing those comments from the planning board and the community, the site plan was revised before coming to the Commissioners today. And this is what's now being proposed. They reduced in scale what they had proposed out there. So they dropped from 112,000 square feet to 80,000 square feet. The biggest notices you'll see here are that two of the buildings got cut off and the access to John Rainey Road was removed. So this drops the total capacity from 112,000 down to 80,000. And it still keeps three indoor mini storage buildings and then one of the traditional unconditioned spaces. So from here.
Did you say three?
Yeah, there's three indoor and one traditional. So we'll kind of take a tour around here. So this is the entrance here off of Mooresville Road. The front building here is a 12,000 square foot indoor mini storage facility. That also has an office space for a full-time staff attendant. Along with this, we'll see that there's plans to have a evergreen buffer between the residences on the western side of the property, along with the eight foot tall vinyl fence mixed in for some extra screening. And then when you look towards the eastern side of the property, it's also pretty similar there. It's got tree coverage and an evergreen buffer along with vinyl fencing, vinyl slash wooden fencing, depending on what they choose to go with, as a screening between the adjacent residents to the east. So they submitted this as their, as a rendering of what this will potentially look like from the road. So the building here, it's got a little bit of a facade on it with some masonry towards the bottom. Kind of got a bit of a glass entryway there. You can see off in the back, the two other indoor storage facilities. And then some of the tree lines there. One thing to keep in mind, while they do show the building with this kind of facade on it, that's not specifically part of the site plan. So if that's something that y'all are interested in, that could be added as a mutually agreed upon condition to add that kind of an improved appearance. So continuing on with the site plan, on the side of, that's closer to John Rainey Road here, there's a two-story proposed building here that's got 36,000 square feet of storage. So it's an 18,000 square foot footprint with two floors to give you that total storage area. The tree line, once it comes around the corner here, swaps from the vinyl slash wooden fencing to a standard chain link fence. And that was something I did talk to the applicant about that they may want to consider and working with y'all to kind of round the corner since part of this area here, while it's keeping the existing vegetation, is empty field. So they may want to look into continuing buffering around that corner. And then as we go to the rest of the site here, we see the 8,000 square foot, just kind of your standard mini storage, the unconditioned space, along with the stormwater pond. As this is in a area, a phase two stormwater area. So DEQ is going to have a stormwater pond most likely required. So they've included it on the site here. Something to keep in mind, they're fairly confident that's where their stormwater pond is going to go. Should this be approved and the stormwater pond move significantly, that would be something that would come back up for y'all to take a look at if it constituted a major change to the site. So taking a look at the area with some area photos. This is a look from John Rainey Road here. John Rainey Road is a gravel road that's maintained by the state. And it's pretty much, it's pretty wooded, looking back towards John Rainey Road. And then looking north here, you can see the intersection of Mooresville Road there and one of the adjoining residences. And then taking a look from the Mooresville Road frontage, you can see on one side, two of the residences in front there. Couple cars there are for a rural home occupation, Singo Motors. And then looking east here, you can see another one of the adjacent properties as you head back towards Salisbury. So just kind of an aerial, kind of like a 3D aerial view. You can see that there's two businesses that do join this property in the backside. And one of them is a landscaping supply company and a cell tower. And the other one is a Sunoco gas station. The landscaping has been there post zoning and the, and the gas station was there pre zoning. But otherwise, you can kind of see how the forest, or how the, how the, kind of the forest circles around the rest of that property there with the empty field. And then the two other adjoining properties, as you go back and see the adjoining residence off of John Rainey there. So just kind of taking a look, these are what some of the businesses are in the area. Singo Motors again is a rural home occupation, so that's, the owner lives on site. And their business is run out of the building in the back there. And then the Sunoco existed prior to zoning. And then the People's Bark and Stone is another use in the CBI zone. So this is kind of just a top-down view of it. You can see here, two of the residences are kind of categored on the property that's got the proposed rezoning on it. There's another two residents at front off of Mooresville Road here. And then a fifth one behind on John Rainey. But also joining here is the two CBI zone properties that have existing businesses on them already. So taking a look at the zoning in the area, it's predominantly zoned rural residential out there. And then the other prominent zoning is residential suburban. But most of those zones are in major subdivisions that front on either Neil Road or Mooresville Road. And then there are two existing CBI zone lots that are joining to the request right here. So as far as potential impacts on facility, NC DOT has indicated they don't have an issue with the access off of Mooresville Road. They've not issued a formal driveway permit. The Briggs Road to Quail Road section of 150, which is where the entrance would be located, has 7,200 trips a day in 2019 and a capacity of 14,600. And then the next closest section of Mooresville Road, which is from Quail to Candlewick, and that's the section that contains the intersection with Cheryl's Ford, had 10,000 trips a day in 2018 with a 12,500 capacity. We did some calculations with the engineering manuals and the trip generation manual, seventh edition, kind of gave us about 2,000 weekday trips generated for this mini square footage and 186 Saturday trips with weekday peak AM hours at about 22 trips per hour. And then PM peak hours, we're looking at 23 trips per hour. And then, as mentioned earlier, this is in the phase two stormwater area. So DEQ would have to approve the stormwater. So back in July, the planning board heard this request as the original request presented to you. And mostly people spoke in opposition. We're talking about traffic issues, safety issues, privacy, and property values were the big concerns from the community. And then the planning board raised concerns that the use itself encircled the residents at 3707 Mooresville Road on two sides. So ultimately, the planning board adopted this statement of consistency and reasonfulness. And then motioned to deny the application on a vote 42. So as far as some staff comments on this request, higher standards described in the building elevations, as I mentioned earlier, those are not specifically required, but you could work with the applicant to make those requirements if you'd like. The applicant did mention about lighting in some of their documentation. And the board could talk to them about having that as a specific condition as well. And then ultimately, with this being a conditional district request, if there's anything that the board felt was missing from the site plan or needs to be addressed for approval, the board could look to that as mutually agreed upon conditions as well. As far as procedures, need to conduct a public hearing, adopt statements, and then approve, deny, or table the request. Both me and the applicant are here. If y'all have any questions.
Yeah, I've got a question, Aaron.
All right.
Is there any reason why instead of asphalt, they couldn't just put gravel out there?
I think they chose asphalt. The applicant could answer more towards that as a higher standard than a typical gravel lot.
Higher standard, huh?
It just, the asphalt's a little bit nicer than gravel.
The gravel would prevent water from running, correct?
There are specific types of gravel that can work to runoff that we use in some of the, some of the watershed areas look at. But in this specific case, they're looking, DEQ's got this in a stormwater area. So the gravel wouldn't have much of an impact on that.
Thank you.
Sorry? Right.
Can you bring the map back up that had the, it was the red and orange map?
The zone map? There we go.
Where's the John Rainey? Where's that?
Solar farm?
Solar farm, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little bit, it's a little bit off picture here. It was a little bit further down the road.
Did that ever become operational?
I know the solar panels are out there. I'm not sure if it's fully operational.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions for Aaron?
Aaron, what's the topography like on that area?
It's a little bit, might be able to zoom in here. But it kind of dips down. So if you look at the, the higher elevation is going to be on the roadside here. And then it slopes back towards where that retention pond is. So there is a bit of a drop off. You can kind of see it on, let's see, looking towards John Rainey. It doesn't look like I have a picture that really shows it, but there was, there's a bit of a, it kind of slopes down from the road onto the property.
Back toward the pond.
Yeah, that, the lower elevation is in that corner.
All right, anyone else?
I just noticed something, Aaron. Okay, so back in that back quarter, corner, what exactly does that say next to the, is that the pond or what is that?
Let's see, we got to zoom in here.
There we go.
Yeah.
Oh, septic field. Okay, okay, thanks.
Don't go anywhere. We'll need you.
All right.
We'll move on. The applicant here tonight and we'll hear from you guys.
Good evening. Thanks for your time tonight Commissioners. My name is Frank Sutton. This is my son Drew. He is one of my five kids that's going to be, is one of the owners of Sutton Children LLC. We're fourth generation. My grandfather farmed this property. I was, lived on the property, members of Neil Road Baptist Church. This is definitely a neighborhood business. We build businesses and like to be long-term investors and holders of those. We will be overseeing the managing, management, having a full-time person there. I wanted to point out a few of the changes we made that I think are really important to understand. Drew has got a few pictures he's going to hand you related to the area. But as you saw in looking at the area of businesses, we have a number of businesses, commercial businesses surrounding us. I'm a big proponent of small businesses, invest in community and small businesses. I respect the Singos for the business they've created. The reason it says Singo Auto Company on the sign is it's a commercial business with 15 cars a day setting in the yard. And they're running a very good business and congratulations to them. So we have a convenience store. We have an auto repair shop. We have a cell tower. And this use as far as traffic will probably generate the least, least traffic of any of these. This is a indoor climate control. It'll be 90% indoor. That means people will come out to a door, automatic door opens, they'll go inside, they'll unload their stuff, they'll do their business. There, there won't be a lot going on outside those buildings. The eight right now in Rowan County, only one is climate controlled. It is fully full. All self-storage in Rowan County is 90% occupied. I've done surveys on all eight of those facilities. So we do think as the road widens, as the county grows in this direction, there's a need in the West Rowan Locktown Fire Ship area for self-storage. We want to be a good neighbor because we're relying on those neighbors to do business with us. So that's the reason we, and I made some pictures. You'll see, I'm going to refer to the one that you can see the aerial. It's really important to understand that we have a wooded buffer almost completely surrounding this property. Now, one of the reasons we removed the corner building at John Rainey and the entrance, I can understand the Stratman family not wanting a building setting on that corner. So we did listen to what they had to say. And the requirement is a 20-foot landscape buffer. We are now averaging 25 to 28 feet around the property. And we have put significantly more fencing and landscaping. So we want to, we want to fit in the community, not be an eyesore to community. But we're going to have one restroom. We have done all the civil engineering, all the, we've done the full civil engineering. This is the plan we would like to build. So I can assure you, we've done the PERC test. We've checked out the driveway. The stormwater is more than sufficient. But we want this to be the nicest, the safest, the most secure climate control facility in Rowan County. I've been investing in these for over 10 years. We know about the operation of them. That's really important to us. One other key factor that I want you to know, when you look at that elevation, we did a 3D aerial elevation we had prepared so you could understand. This is the facade we're going to build. We want to have a very nice appearance. And the other buildings in the back will be earth toned. But a critical thing, you have an eight, you're 800 feet above sea level at 150 and at John Rainey. The topography drops all the way as low as 780, both directions going from Highway 150 and John Rainey towards that retention pond. So as you can see on the plans that have been done, the two two-story buildings, their finished floor elevation is the same as the first one-story building at 792. And why is that important? When you're standing on at 150 at 800 feet above sea level and you look at the first building, that single-story building, 792, those other buildings are not going to stand out and be above that building. So we listened, we attempted to listen to the traffic concerns, the buffer concerns, the appearance concerns. And this would be a $5 million facility adding to the tax base that today's calls to self-storage. So we're trying to be a very mindful, mindful neighbor and creating a use that is not only needed in the community, but will have a low impact, whether it be traffic or water. I've been in the convenience store business. I've been in the banking business, number of businesses, and this is the lowest traffic count business that I have been involved in just by the nature of it. So that, that's a little bit about what we did on. And the answer, Aaron brought up a good point. My civil engineer did not include it. There will be additional trees planted down that parallel property line along John Rainey that the plans do not show. So we've tried to also take in mind the Anthony household, which I, I could be wrong, but I believe Mr. Anthony or some of his family live in the home that is adjacent right in front of the retention and the small building in the back. And again, we've tried, where, what we're trying to do is use the naturally existing wooded buffers and keep as much of those as possible. And then supplement with our additional trees and fencing as needed. So, any other comments, Drew? I missed?
No, I think, you know, we did a great job highlighting a lot of the changes and I will. No, I think, you know, we did a great job highlighting a lot of the changes, and I will just echo that we've tried to be, you know, mindful and cognizant of the community and the planning board's concerns and suggestions for how to make this a more workable site that fits into the community. We want to be good stewards and, you know, provide an asset to the community. Self-storage is by nature just a neighborhood amenity. The neighbors in the surrounding West Rowan area will be our customers. Right by them, which is why we've taken down the density. We've done things like eliminate the entrance on John Rainey and eliminate the RV and boat spaces to, you know, take down some of that density, ease the traffic, you know, improve the safety profile, just given we've only got one point of ingress and egress on 150, which is the major road of West Rowan. So we rea- we really did take the, the planning board and the community's commentary into account when we, when we redesigned this facility and much needed and, you know, a well-served asset that benefits the.
Be glad to answer any questions or clarify any points.
Mr. Sutton, I always ask these questions, so my poor cohorts are going to close their ears. What height of trees are you planning on planting?
What height of trees?
Yeah. I mean, are we talking like oak trees or are we talking about crape myrtles?
We, we will be doing a lot of Leyland cypress because they're great screening trees and they grow very fast.
Yes, and they die very fast.
A detailed landscape plan, we haven't went to that level because we did a very detailed civil engineering, but I can assure you, we're committed to making it look as nicely, we, we want to present a, a self-storage that stands out from the competition.
Yeah.
And, and you know, dying trees do us no favors if we're trying to present a good picture to our potential clients. So, you know, we intend to maintain and manicure the landscaping that befits the, the quality of the buildings we're trying to provide. It's kind of meets the purpose if we build great buildings and don't have a good curb appeal.
Well, I really like this latest architectural drawing. I hope you stick to that. Would you be okay if we just put into the the permit that all dead screening will be replaced?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that all.
Dead screening?
Yes, ma'am.
Things that die will be replaced? Okay. And then I'm going to ask the gravel question again because crushed stone, especially when you've got this much pavement and roof, you know, that, that runs off really fast. And in town here, I got rid of my asphalt. That's why I'm such a big you rah rah person for this, but in an area where I've got a downspout that's directed the wrong way, I mean, it's just like, and you never see that water run off. I mean, it just goes right in the ground. And as we continue to pave this county, I think that wherever we can, and it's a lot cheaper to put in like either half or one inch crushed stone into facility like that. But that's just my comments. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Suttons?
Just explain the type of lighting that you have and the direction of the lighting and a lot of times this is, this is an issue around neighborhoods, and we'd just like to know what you're going to do about that.
We, we actually use lighting on, on the corners of buildings that will be, and as, for lack of a better description, hooded. So we can prevent it from, you know, pushing out into the neighborhood. I think the big thing, because these buildings are all going to be relatively the same height and only be, you know, one story, you know, from compared to the, the what's around it, the way we do the lighting and infrared cameras for safety, we can control that. Plus, the buffer areas is going to, are going to help a lot also. It, it really helps that our topography drops. I've walked this lot many times. When we first got the engineering, we just didn't believe it. We triple-checked it and we had full civil engineering plans done because it is a substantial drop off going back from John Rainey, back to the pond and from Highway 150, but we're using that to our advantage, which will impact both the, the lack of visibility of the other buildings, and it will help us on the lighting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Now we're going to open the floor for public comment, and so we'll limit it just because of time. Whoever wants to speak can. Oh, it's open-ended. All right. So just come forward, state your name and your address and your comments. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Masingo. This is my wife, Robin. We live at 3707 Mooresville Road. And I am the owner and operator of Masingo's Motor Company. I am also a perfect gentleman. I'm going to let my wife go first.
Petition of 41 signatures. Two of the signatures are including the two commercial properties.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
I have a petition of 41 signatures, including the two other businesses that are included, the peeler and the gas station right next to us opposing this new site plan. I'd like to go and pass that around. Before I talk about the signatures, I also have the new site plan against the commercial properties. I'd like to pass that around too. I've gone up around, up and down Mooresville Road into the Neil Estates, talking to each person in the community about how they feel about this. And they are concerned about not just the traffic, but the safety of who's coming and going. People, they told me that they moved to the country to get away from any commercial facility, anything. They want the beauty, to keep the beauty and preserve the neighborhood community, the homes, the preservation of this whole area. That's why they moved to the country to get away from any infrastructure and any commercial building. They're also concerned about the safety of our children, the people who come in. If there's only security there after, up till 5 o'clock, who's to say who's going to come in after? Who's going to drive by our roads, watching our children, even though there is a wall separating us, they can still drive around the corner, look past the two homes and seeing our kids play. Also have a pile of articles of trafficking related to storage facilities. As you can see on the new site plan, even with the changes they made, I would not expect anything less than 80-foot full-ground trees planted around a property, and that's not even efficient to me. Also, even a fence, a two-story building, who's to say they cannot look into our backyard from a two-story versus a one-story? Even if there's houses with the eight-foot fence. Once you create light, you can't fully remove it. You can't create darkness once you create light from stadium lighting. And if our neighbor right across from us, if you can see on the site plan, how those buildings completely surround him, surround their, around their properties, around their view of, even if there's trees, they're still surrounded by asphalt and buildings. And if you can see our other neighbor, you can see how close that building is to their home. That they're going to have, if that's a chain-link fence, they're going to have a concrete wall as their view.
Just a few things that I would like to point out. I do run Masingo's Motor Company, and Mr. Sutton is correct. I do run about 13 to 14 cars. That is my backlog as it sits right now. We turn about four to six cars per day. The reason I'm running a backlog is car prices are extraordinarily expensive right now, so people are doing major repairs, which take longer. So they sit on my property. I have six engine swaps right now that I'm doing. Cars range from 2000 to about 2016 that I'm working on. We are so busy right now that I've hired, hired a new mechanic. I'm on pace to be out of that and into a new commercial facility in about 18 months. That is my goal. I built that facility. It's 1,200 square feet, three bays to launch out of. I do not intend to stay there permanently. I want to live there permanently. I bought the house in 2016 to raise my family. I have a little girl right back here. She's five months old. And, and I intend to stay there for the foreseeable future. But in terms of Masingo's Motor Company, in about 12 to 18 months, I want to move that to a much larger facility, more conducive to my workload. The scale of this thing is just apocalyptic, in my opinion. 80,900 square feet under roof. My facility and my house is 2,655 square feet. So that makes this facility 30.5 times larger than my home. My neighbor at 3711, his name is Philip Teen, it's 50 times the size of his home. Jerry Anthony, who lives directly adjacent to the proposed site, is 30.14 times his home size, and the Stratman family that lives directly behind us, it is 16.18 times their home. In total, this facility is 6.77 times the size of those four homes combined square footage. Also, my operating hours are eight to six. Usually I'm able to close up shop about 5 o'clock. This facility is planned to be open 24/7, which means that nobody is going to be on-site. It's going to be up to me to police who comes in and out near my property. I, I, I figure that that fence is not going to stop criminals from coming and breaking in petty larceny. My family ran a shop out on Statesville Boulevard a number of years ago. Petty larceny was a massive problem. We had to break in about every six months. And there's just really nothing that anybody could do to stop it. We, we engaged in putting fences up, security cameras, still didn't stop it. The fence that is proposed on the backside there is chain-link, and it looks like it's vinyl along the side of it. You would find that typical around the salvage yard. That, if you want to know what that fence is going to look like, go to Copart up in Mooresville, or excuse me, Moxville, the, the chain-link fence, very similar to what you find on RC salvage over on Behringer Road. It's chain-link with metal inserts. I'm assuming they're going to do the metal inserts. The character of the neighborhood is, is residential. Yes, there are a few commercial properties there. I don't intend to stay there but about another year with my facility. The gas station predates the zoning. And Peoples was there for a long time before I got there. There's 41 signatures on that page of people that don't want to live next to this thing. The biggest factor when I built Masingo's Motor Company that was zoned is I had to live on the property. That was a strict stipulation. Without me on the property, I could not operate the business. So, Mr. Sutton, I don't believe intends to live on this property because I don't see a house plant anywhere. I don't believe 41 people want to live next to this thing. Do any of you want to live next to this thing? If no, please don't make me or my family live next to this. I believe it should stay residential for those reasons. Thank you.
I'd like to add something else. I know Frank Sutton talked about his family legacy and complete respect to Devona, his mom. She has worked that land. And we are honored to be living in her home and make it a home for ourselves, as well for our baby. Also, a lot of our customers that we serve are veterans and people in the community. They are not just our customers. They have become long-term friends and are very supportive of us. And in turn, it out, I have taken the Masingo name, like Frank Sutton has taken his name, to honor the community. And I believe when you support the community, you are present, and you are present, and you are not afraid to get your hands dirty in serving your, your community, the people that help support you. I intend to join up with Tackle 22 Fishing. It is a program to support and prevent veteran suicide. We are going to do a video in the future with them. They are also customers of ours. We are also doing Toys for Tots this year in support of the children and joining up with our marine friends. Also, we are also planning on supporting Elite Freedom Shooters. They are a military-based community program that provides security, support, brothership for fellow former Marines and military and SWAT members. They do canine training, camping, all sorts of stuff. So I already spoke to one of the members about getting involved. So basically, you know, the Masingo's, Masingo, the name, it's, we've been around for a long time, and I'm planning on taking that even further. And I see supporting a community is you are physically active, not just, you know, signing a check from another town. I don't see it like that. You know, we're living here on this property, and I plan to take that name and further get involved in the community and do what I can to help serve our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Stratman, and this is my husband Chris and my two little boys. And I just wanted to share a couple of quick things. I trust all of the factual data that they're going to be presenting. But on your screen right here is where my home is. It's the Stratman home, and it will be the neighbor on this side. And my property goes all the way back right next to that storm pond. And speaking on behalf of myself and my elderly neighbor who lives on the other side of us, who knows the Sutton family very well. First of all, she's appalled. She's sick over this. She's 80 years old. She can't make it. She wishes that she could. So I want to speak on behalf of her, but also for my family. And I don't mean this in any kind of like a snarky type of way, but if the buildings were made of gold, it wouldn't make it better. It wouldn't make it more beautiful and more okay with our families that are surrounding this. My front porch is now going to be viewed by thousands of people. I moved to the woods. If you want to build five homes on those acreages, beautiful. Let's have some neighbors. I'm all about it. Bring in some families. I'm not okay with thousands of strangers coming in and seeing where I live and seeing my home and seeing my kids in my front yard. And I would really question Mr. Sutton. I'm probably like around the age of his kids. I highly doubt he would want that for his family too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone else?
Good evening. My name is Jason. I just want to say a quick comment in support of the, the project here, playing Sutton, Jason Sutton. Frank is my second cousin. He's my dad's first cousin. I've known Frank since I was born. I've worked with him for eight years, developed some businesses and grew those with him. I've been a member of this community. I live here for 40 years. My entire, my entire life, I graduated from Eastern End in 1999. Anyone that's lived here knows that every time we drive down a, down a road in this county, something is being built, whether it's a house put on a small parcel, a business going in. With growth comes change, and with growth comes infrastructure needed to support that change. If anyone was going to build this, I've seen Frank in action. He has the, the resources, the care and the attitude to do it the correct way, do it the right way, and take care of the community around it. We're fortunate to have someone like him wanting to build that here. The other part we haven't mentioned yet is it takes the community to look after each other. I know there's some security concerns, but luckily we're in a world where everything can be done remotely and viewed, and a lot of those concerns can be eliminated with just technology and investment. The other part is that these do serve more than just a service for storing things. I, I run a side business with online sales. I currently have to drive 25 minutes to Cabarrus County in a space that I rent there because I can't find the right site here and the right size and the right price. We do not have enough storage facilities. I know that they are eyesores if they're not done correctly. But, you know, I ask that we look at more than just the impact in that little, little pocket there. I, I, I know that everyone moves to the woods in the country because they want to get out, but development does catch up with us at some point. You know, there were people in Charlotte that eventually didn't live in the city, but now it grew. And, and we're not Charlotte, thank goodness. I'm very happy where we live, but growth is going to have to happen at some point, and you've got the right person here with this project that will make it fit in the community, do the right thing and keep the do the right thing, and keep the standards up. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
I'm Jerry Anthony. I live on the right side. Where are they going to build this? I'll have two buildings on my left side. One behind me. Going to box my land, you know, my yard in. And right behind it, they're going to put a holding pond. I know Frankie, I mean Frank. Say, well, the runoff between John Rainey Road and one fifty, go back to the holding pond. That is about all of us that live right there, well water. What's it going to do to our water? You're going to have a holding pond there. You don't know what's going to be in it. And two, traffic, I mean, oh, it's not no, no problem. You know, they say it's not a problem, but we have a new development going in up above us around Mill Bridge Road, where the racetrack is. They have cleaned out on John Rainey Road for possibly another home development. You're going to have these people coming in to this place for the development. And I don't see where going to help. Like I said, the traffic is already got, I've been living there for thirty years. And I've seen multiple wrecks right there, and our house, basically in front of our house and Neil Road off of one fifty. Now, I think my grandma, well, my daughter, she was waiting to turn into driveway. Come, somebody came, come along, went paying attention, which I know that's not a problem for them, but ran out all over, knocked a car over into our front yard. She basically, she got shook up, but she didn't really get badly hurt. But like I say, two of them buildings, you know, I reckon they'll be the backside of the buildings. That's what we'll see. Back of our yard. There's going to be a holding pond plus another building, which we probably wouldn't be able to. The way that's shown, that maybe the building might cover up hold. But like I say, there's people that lives on the backside. Thing goes. Our family, I think there's another one on the other side of there. We're all on the well water. And what's going to happen when all this stuff coming off? I reckon would John Rainey Road be paved? I don't know. But it's a dirt road. And off of one fifty, their entrance is going to be basically right beside my driveway. Like I said, the traffic is already terrible. They, I know it's not their fault or anybody's fault except for the drivers driving the cars. But the speed limit is fifty. And sometimes you come down through there. It might be going sixty, sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. And if there's anybody stopped there to turn O'Neil Road, like I say, I've seen multiple, I've jumped up out of my, off my porch and ran up there and asked, you know, people's okay wrecks. And I think this would be a contribution, contribute to more, more wrecks or more, something would need to be done there. But I don't think that this thing, like I say, this is not, and it's a, the county's rural residential. Yeah, all on the left side, especially if you go Salisbury, towards more, it's just houses all the way up. Other side, you have farm fields. Right in my house, there's a big old field, I believe soybean. What's, what is it? What's going to happen? I know I might be just far reached. What's going to happen when all this stuff gets over? And they won't be able to use them fields. The environment, I love, I have deer coming up in my backyard, plenty of squirrels, which I don't like. But you have rabbits. I've had coyotes. I've had all kinds of wildlife. I mean, we feed the hummingbirds, so they're there. But we have all kinds of animals coming in the backyard. And we'd love to see, I mean, you know, I get excited when a big old buck comes up in my backyard. I want to, you know, take a picture of it there. But I just want to say, the lot that they want to build this on is not the place for, it's in a residential area, and people don't want them. I appreciate, you know, listening to me. I could probably talk another hour, but I'm not. But
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, next.
Hey, my name's Dewey Bryan. I live out in Mount Olah area. I have known Frank. I moved here in nineteen seventy-one to Salisbury. So I've been here pretty much all my life. We went to elementary school, junior high, high school together. I've been a fan, a friend of his family for a long time. His mother died back in thirteen, two thousand and thirteen, when she lived in the house where the Singos are. I understand their concern, but as, you know, as Anthony just spoke about the living in the country, you think of Mount Olah as the country. I've been out in the country. I lived on a two and a half mile road. When we built our house, we were the second house on that road. Now, there's fourteen houses on it. And I stopped that. No. And as I drove in today and looked on the way up here tonight, when I got past the new development that he was talking about on one fifty, it's a major development. I mean, we're talking acres and acres of homes. You can't stop it. You come on down the road, there's a Speedway, Mill Bridge Speedway. I like racing. I'm a fan of racing. Do I go there? No, I don't have to. I live five miles away. I can hear it when the race is there. So, you know, there's things that we can't control. You know, I have to vouch for Frank and his family. If it's going to be done, it will be done right. There's no doubt in my mind. I have seen his convenience stores that he has done. I know it was done in good taste and perfection. So I'm not, I know they have concerns about lighting an issue like that. Another thing I want to point out is I do a lot of traveling. I've seen these storage buildings built everywhere. And as I see them being built, as I travel these same roads, I'm like, I'm going to hate this one because it's going to be, it's going to create a traffic jam. Because most of the time, they're at a stoplight. I have not seen that. There's a new one down in Concord that's three stories tall, right at the intersection of twenty-nine six oh one. And I really thought this was going to be a major setback at that intersection because it's bad intersection anyway. But you hardly ever see anybody there. You know, I understand the concerns. And getting to the buffers, you were talking about the dead trees. I don't know what their plans are, but I'm sure he'll make it nice. I can just, I can remember years ago, his, where his mother lived, his grandparents lived in the house next door. There was a barn back next to your house. There was pigs in that barn. So, you know, years ago, that was the country. But it's not the country anymore, as much as I hate to say it. And I hate to say where I live in Mount Olah. It's not going to be the country for long because we got Salisbury coming this way and Mooresville coming this way. We can't control everything. But if it is done in professionalism, I can vouch for Frank that he will do it right. If you need any alternatives to change the plans, I'm sure he would look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Next.
Hi there. I'm Chris Stratman. I live at the bottom of the property. I have some papers I'd like to hand out.
You can just give them to her. Yeah.
There you go.
All right. So, the first page that you'll see, I'll wait for it to be passed down here. Basically shows the homes in relation to this plan. I feel like this plan lacks, it basically lacks showing how close these homes are in comparison to these absolutely massive buildings. And so, that was the main problem with the planning board. The planning board voted no against this project because of how close this is to each of the houses and how it splits our community apart. It just is gigantic wedge separating all the houses and everyone around it. And that's why the planning board voted no. Another thing, it's interesting, it's kind of seeing this new, the new plan here. I know Frank tried to take our concerns in mind, but there's so much more than I could see that he could have done, and he just didn't do it. Like, if I was him and I was hearing people saying that, yeah, this is wrapping around houses, then I would be, I would be coming up like, listen, we got to wrap less houses. But he didn't. It's still wrapping the same number of houses. He added trees to the property, but eh, forget about Stratmans, no trees down there. Now, we're just the fence up. So, I mean, I'm a little, it just really saddens me seeing this big monstrosity in here. And that covers kind of page one. And the second page where it says a side by, the residential side comparison. I looked at many store, many, many storage complexes around the area. And I thought, you know, are they all like this? Like, how do other ones kind of compare? And so I went on to Google, I went on to tax Rowan County NC.gov, and I did some research. I dug in. And I looked and found all the mini storages. And I thought, how does it relate? Can I get some apples to apples comparison? You know? And so I looked at them all, and the closest that I could find was Red Web Road. Web Road is a square piece of property that borders three different residential properties. So on that side-by-side comparison, you can kind of see how many sides that connects to. It connects to three sides, three residential sides. Whereas this one has six residential sides, doubles it. I bet if I went and looked at all of Mooresville and maybe even Charlotte, to find a piece of commercial property that bordered six residential properties, it's pretty, pretty amazing. The next sheet, what you'll, what you'll see is the distance comparison. So I put, I wanted to see, okay, how close is this to the houses? You know, let's use the Web Road comparison. In Web Road, you can see that their, their complex is the little, the storage facilities. There's one house that's around two hundred feet. So each one of those little red lines that you see on that piece of paper is fifty feet. Okay, and you see on the Web Road, there's a little letter lines, a whole bunch of little ones, because I had to zoom out, because those houses are really far away. Two hundred feet on the Web Road to one house, and then to around two hundred and forty to the other house. Now, remember I said it was three residential properties? That's because the third house is off the map. It's crazy far away. So Web Road, the one that's closest to all the residential properties, you can clearly see how far away this thing is from all the other houses. Now, if you take that in comparison to John Rainey, well, you got the Singos, they're about a hundred feet away from the closest building. My house is about a hundred feet away to the closest building, corner to corner, a hundred feet away. And then you got, you got Jerry's house. I feel bad for Jerry. Jerry back there, his house is fifty feet away, and one house, that building is around forty-eight feet away. Forty-eight feet. Look at the size of this room. This room is bigger than forty-eight feet. It's bigger. The corner, the corner of that big two-story complex to Jerry's house is smaller than this room. I mean, that's absurd. Absolutely absurd. I was, I was blown away to kind of find that information. And then on the very last sheet, what I did was I went and looked at every single storage facility. I was like, is there anything close? And you can see that all the sides where it says zero, that's because it's boarding a road. It's bordering empty farmland. It's bordering commercial properties. All those zeros is because that's what is bordering. All of them. And then you can just kind of see like, oh, yeah, there's some that border residential. Oh, it's got one side on a residential. Oh, it's got one residential property. But this right here borders six sides of residential property, six. It is absolutely amazing that this is even being proposed. I'm just astounded. It's, it's, it's basically like he's trying to, to put this in here because he already owns the land. He's trying to find an easy way in to get this thing built and to use his land. He lives two hours away. And he's not here next to it. The Singos are here. They live here. I'm here. Jerry's here. Phillip's here. This thing is wrapping around our properties. He's trying to get this in here just because he already owns it. It's easy. There's property right down the road. Literally, I can go on Zillow right now. There's property right down the road. Bigger than this, allowing for him to expand. That only borders two residential properties, two sides. He can go home and buy that property and drop this right in. Our family and all the families are not arguing and not complaining about changes. You know, we're definitely happy to welcome neighborhood, neighborhood and families. I mean, Mr. Sutton's friend said, yeah, you know, families are growing, things are changing, and we're welcoming change. But what we don't welcome is this commercial property surrounding us completely. It's setting like an absurd precedent that this could happen for other projects in the future. I just, I found it absolutely amazing. And, and I'm scared about the crime. I don't want to rehash everyone else's, but you know, I think I conveyed my point. And there's, there's other options. This does not have to be the plan. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks for having me. My name is Joe Harper, and I live 480 Roger Drive in Homestead Hills. My property backs up to John Rainey Road. I moved there about six, when I retired out of RECOR. And we fought the annexation battle. I know you remember that. A lot of my neighbors, Bernie and a bunch of us fought when I found that city was Salisbury State in my backyard. I was pretty upset. Because I came from Jacksonville, North Carolina, where they annexed the heck out of us. However, it hasn't been brought to anybody's attention. I use that John Rainey Road quite a bit. It backs up to my property and probably about ten other properties. Right now, they're building another house that backs up to it. Also, Spencer Lane has just cleared a bunch of property down there, fifteen acres. He's fixing to put about eleven houses in there, all of them fifteen hundred square foot or bigger. I don't know if you're aware of that. So that's going to add traffic to the John Rainey Road, which is already a problem because I got the cameras up on my property because I got people coming down dumping trash, leaving stolen cars, you name it. It's happened back there. We're already getting a lot of garbage back there, and I think that's just going to add to it. But we're already getting a lot of garbage back there, and I think that's just going to add to it. If, uh, and the house that sits right there next to that pond is a very nice house, and I think that's going to hurt those people that, that border that pond, that's right next, right in their yard almost. Thanks for having me. Any questions on that development? Joe Harper, H A R P E R. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
My name is William Yost. I'm owner of Cobble Creek Vineyard. I'm property owner and farm across the street with my grandmother, lived across from Sutton's. So we go back over 60, 70 years. And we like growth in a balanced state. And I've traveled all over the states and the US, and I've noticed the population increases. And I'm also on the county farm bureau of Rowan County. I'm all for agriculture and sustained growth and protecting our environment. One of the things that they told us in the last couple of years, just recently, that the 85 corridor is going to be increased by 25% population. There are going to be a mass of people coming in. So a balanced project is what I've seen. Now, I understand your relations and I understand the property. Because me and Franklin used to travel and, I mean, play in those playgrounds on both sides of the fence. And it's not the country anymore, guys. I'm sorry. I put my property and business off from property that we've owned and farmed and tried to protect it. So I listened to the comments and, uh, security issues. Well, the storage facility at this, what I'm seeing, and we talked about it. There's going to be higher security here than any place you go. And in the, in the store right outside of this. So I don't see a security issue because this is high income. Not poverty. The second is asphalt gravel. Well, with the pond, and if anybody has done civil engineering, I have. The runoff there is not going to be anything to disrupt gravel. That pond is going to be holding enough to be safe. It's not going to get into the environmental water. The fallwater is not an issue. Uh, auto businesses, I know you're expanding, love it. Okay? But there is no guarantee that you're going to move. Because you just don't know. I don't know. I don't have the financial. Road expansion. That four, that, uh, Highway 150. The four lane one in there. It's going to change everything.
Hey, can I say one thing? So it's the board that's going to do the voting?
Sure.
So if, just address.
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Yeah. The neighbors. Yes. We've, we've watched new neighbors come in and leave, children grow, grow up, leave the county, and then try to bring back something they respect and try to make, uh, Rowan County. Frank's parents, grandparents, and also his children. They respect everything. They have good morals. Okay? If Frank Sutton said it's going to happen the way it should happen, for all the protection, all the landscaping, even a few other items, even the lighting. There's IR cameras on these facilities, you don't require a lot of highlighting. Security coming in, one man. Okay? One man coming in. You're not going to see this. The traffic flow is going, the largest traffic flow coming into that facility is going to be the initial startup. And I think it would be sold out 90%. The traffic coming into that facility is going to cease in the first one to two years, if it runs. Right away from the 30 foot to 100 foot from the houses, yes, I know. I've seen that happen in my development. But if you take down the trees that has currently on that, the view, the residence view, if you, actually Frank says, I'm going to take down all the trees around that property. And your neighbors, everybody else. And it happens. I'm all for this. I think this is a good growth. It's a balanced growth. It's a secured growth. It's an economic growth for our county. We've talked about this on a lot of boards, a lot of commercials, and a lot of, a lot of conversations regarding, well, what's going to keep our tax, property taxes down? We're going to need businesses like this. Five million dollars is a lot of money to go on a project like this. Property values are going to have to increase, or will increase automatically. Tax rates are going to increase in order to take care of the county budgets. This is a good profit. Good tax base, good tax basis for businesses like this. And it's going to be good for Rowan County if we get on board and work together in a balance. I'd rather see this in here than another residential. A low-income housing. A waste storage facility. There's a lot more that could happen. But this is a well strategically logical, well-planned out, provided by citizens who have been in this county for 100 years. And they're not going to let that piece of property go into bad. So whatever needs to be corrected, adjusted, the Sutton family is going to do it. So I think that's a good, good thing. That's, that's 100% sure that he's going to make it happen. He has the capital to do it. And he's doing it because it is part of his family. And he wants to leave something in the legacy. And that's where we're coming from. And I thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone going once? Twice? Two and a half? Alright, sold. So we'll close the public hearing and then, uh, commissioners will discuss. I'll, I'll, um, I'll throw out some of the thoughts that I've been writing down. You know, we talk about as these projects come before us, we've kind of hit a time in Rowan County where, and we've been talking about this issue quite a bit. We've been desperate for things to happen. And then as they begin to happen, now we're trying to manage that. And so we get folks come in and say, well, I wanted it, I just didn't want it near me. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have these types of meetings, I think, twice a month as, as projects come along. So there's, there's a lot that we hear from the public, and we certainly have great respect for the opinions of the public. But there's some things that don't worry us as much because we know that there are safeguards in place that are put there by DOT. They're put there by regulation. So when we look at the issues of traffic, we, we look at the traffic studies, we let DOT do their work, and then we go, because we are not DOT engineers, so we rely on them. So we're not so much worried about the traffic there. I'm not worried about criminals taking over Mooresville Road because the, because we have a storage facility like that. I, I don't see safety getting where, I don't see this as being worse than any other business. And from a traffic standpoint, I, I think it provides less. It, it's, um, we don't go out and broadcast this, but my wife and I sold our house in December, and we have everything we own in a storage facility. And I've never gone in there to get spring clothes or exchange for winter clothes that I've seen anybody else there. So it's, it's just not creating a whole lot of traffic. But we're, we're going to have to, um, you know, Mooresville Road, and I don't really think I, we've had anyone here that said, hey, everything needs to stay the way it is. I've not heard that tonight. In fact, I'm encouraged by folks saying, hey, we know growth is coming, and we accept that. Mooresville Road is one of the thoroughfares. It's a corridor. It will, there will be business, there will be industry along Mooresville Road at some point. I, I do want to address the Sutton's here and say that I, I don't know you guys. You seem to be pretty good folks. I, I, anytime we have these decisions, somebody goes home disappointed. If we side with the Sutton's, we've got a lot of folks disappointed that live in the neighborhood. If we side with the neighborhood, then the Sutton's go home and they're disappointed. And by the way, I'm sure that the money you've spent, well, it wasn't free to do what you've done. So I genuinely believe, I don't, there's no indication to me of anything other than I think you are honorable people and you want to do the right thing. And I think you want to build a facility that would be good for the community. We are a growing community. Houses are being built. People are selling homes. People are moving here from around the region and out of state. And so I know that we need storage facilities. But it comes down to this for me, is this the right place? I don't think it is. Okay? So I think Highway 150 needs storage facilities. But I don't think it needs to be there. If it were just fronting 150, it would be one thing for me. But as some have said, it wraps around a lot of residences. And I've, I've just got a, a big problem with that. You'll be disappointed in, in my vote, and I'm sorry for that. I genuinely am sorry for that. So that's, um,
Mr. Chairman, I understand what you're saying. This facility is a five million dollar, projected five million dollar facility that has a lot of indoor storage, which is rare in this community at this point in time. It's, uh, more of it is coming. We see that all of our houses have more stuff than we want. And when we either move or our wives let us throw this junk away or store it outside of our house, we need this facility. I have a tough time with property rights in telling people what they can do with their property. Uh, the three commercial facilities that are already around them. If they came before us tonight, we probably would not pass those facilities. But that area already has commercial business going on. It's not like they're changing the world here. They're not bringing something in like a racetrack or something that is going to completely change the neighborhood. When I went down John Rainey Road, I only saw two houses over there. Now I saw the backs of the lot, and it seems to be trees everywhere back there that, that cuts off the view of other homes. They're pretty isolated. And I have, we have somebody here who's making a major investment, wants to make a major investment in our community. They're providing a service that is needed in our community. And, um, I'm, I'm going to vote for this, Mr. Chairman, because I, I think it is a nice facility. And I just have a hard time voting against this. Let me, let me just say, one other thing that I really appreciate from the time that this was brought before the planning board to now, that he cut off one of the exits. They're, they're not even going to be using the gravel road out there. It's only going to be one entrance back to Highway 150. And he cut down the square footage of what he could get on this, on this facility here. So I think he was looking out and trying to minimize what he was doing to the, to the community.
Mr. Chairman, um, I guess I agree quite frankly with Vice Chair Green. Property rights are very important to me. And as harsh as this sounds is if you don't own land or if you don't want something next to you, then go and buy the land. And I know that sounds harsh, but it is reality. Now, my dairy farm up in Wisconsin didn't have a single house on it for generations. And all of a sudden we got 14. Do I like that? No. Do I rather have something else there? Sure. But if not this, something that's really, quite frankly, pretty darn quiet. And think about that. It's quiet. What would it be? I know you couldn't put an asphalt plant in there because it would never be permitted. But you go down the street to businesses and Peoples'. I've been a customer of Peoples' for years. And I know that 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 business is not pretty to look at. It's been there for a long time, absolutely. But there are things like dust and odors and all those different things. But that's, you know, that's part of the growth. I don't know how many decades they've been there, but you know, you go across the street and you've got the huge church facility over there, plus more residential. And if somebody wanted to come in here and do residential, if that made fiscal sense, can you imagine having, what, I don't know, 20, 30, 40? I don't know how many more houses could we put in there? But my, um, my concern is that the Sutton family does have the right to develop their land. And I know that is not what the majority of the people here want to hear, but it is changing and quite frankly, if it was next to me, I would rather have a mini storage than any other noisy business out there. So that's where I'm at.
Well, you know, some of the things, I agree with some of the things that have been said. You know, we are in a unique.
Well, yeah, some of the things I agree with some of the things have been said. You know, we are in a unique time in our county. For so many years, you know, we've said, hey, when's the growth coming? When's the growth coming? And finally, it's here. And I do some um different boards as part of the our job as commissioners around some of those goes around the state and. We're very fortunate for the growth that we have here in our county and I've talked to some commissioners in other areas. They're really struggling because their their counties are dying and they're not getting the growth and they're not getting the. The tax base they need and they really have to raise taxes. On who's there. I listened to a lot of the um concerns tonight and. You know, some of them, maybe I guess this is my um tenth year up here and and folks come up here and they have concerns and it's our job to listen to the concerns and. Obviously, we have to try to balance between uh empathy and sympathy and. And where would we put ourselves and what's best for the county and what's uh best for the citizens and. Sometimes it's hard to balance those. This one is one that I've bounced back and forth on. I hear from hear one citizen, I say, that's a good point. Another one makes some very good points. So this is really a hard one. I don't think that uh the traffic or the crime uh things that have come up is really going to be a problem. Um and this looks like a really great project. And I wish we had other projects like this in the county. From the testimony I've heard, Mr. Sutton, his family seem very good people. Care about the county, care about their community. But at the end of the day, I think I agree with Chairman Ed's. It really doesn't fit in in there. I I just got to think about the folks. Um they're going to live close to this. I hope this gets built somewhere. Actually, I hope several of them get built throughout the county because I think we are going to need them. I think we've had, I can remember maybe two, at least two. There's probably more that's come to the board since I've been here. And by far and away, this is the best um mini storage. I don't even know if it's called many stores, maybe it's just storage because it's so nice, but storage center that um that has come up and I've. You know, I work in Charlotte and I see some of these six, seven story uh mini storage building or uh storage facilities and. Certainly don't want those out in the county. This this area is very uh interesting. I think a lot of the controversial. Uh issues that we've had have come up in this area on one fifty over the last several years, the giant solar farm, the small solar farm, uh Dollar Generals. Those sort of things. I think it's a solid after area. But at the end of the day. Which I think it's a great project and I think it would bring some benefit. Um trying to balance everything, I think the folks is going to live next to it are probably um going to have some issues. And so I'll I'll have to vote against it.
Well, I guess it comes down to me. Like that's new. It's always my fault. But anyway. I I look at this from a couple of different angles and I know everybody's not going to be happy because there's no way to make everybody happy. You never do. But this is the home place. This is the where the Sutton family has their property for over a century. There is a definite need for this project, so I have to weigh into that. It's their land. There's a need here. I know the neighbors aren't going to like it, but I'm going to vote for it. So. I'll make a motion that we do the statements of consistency and move forward.
Before. We do that, where where can we put some requirements in?
We'll we'll put it in the the final motion.
I know the planning board voted against this, so we have their reasons, but.
We can write them right.
You know, you would need to have a separate set of reasonable consistency. If you wanted to vote, if you're looking to vote in favor of it. You could look to things such as uh. That the land use plan recommends uh highway business off of major thoroughfares. Or you could include things that uh the added conditions could protect the uh joining residences as well. Those could be things you could look to add into a statement of consistency and reasonableness.
Put in the form of a motion uh statement for reasonable that it is in it is consistent with the Western Land Use Plan for uh business down the. Uh major corridors in that area and that it is reasonable and consistent with the zoning that is being requested and that. I move that we um make that in form of a motion.
Hey, Aaron. Aaron, is this where we would add the conditions that they want to add to make it consistent?
Yeah, so they could adopt a statement of reasonable consistency and then vote on uh specific work or work with the applicant on specific conditions before the final vote of approval.
So at this point. Yeah, I know. I know. I know. But at what point then? Like if we wanted to make a requirement that the current architecture that is presented to us um be. The uh building materials because it looks very, very nice. And it also actually know what the second floor windows are all about. Is that just aesthetics?
So we have a motion in a second. Do we want to vote on um?
Yeah, so that'd be the statement of reasonable consistency and then after that you can work on the specific conditions of.
Okay, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, um and then Aaron, where do we go?
So before you vote on approval, uh you can work with the applicant here to pick out the specific conditions that you would like placed on there.
Well. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning based on these conditions. Judy, tell them what you want to know.
You need to make sure that the applicant were are okay with those conditions as well.
I think he will be.
Okay, so the architecture as presented.
The front building elevation that we presented is the exact type of materials flip face block that we plan to use with earth tone colors. Now, keep in mind, the buildings behind it. They would be earth tone metal buildings, but not have the like we couldn't afford to build it and put that salt on all the buildings. I just want to be totally transparent so there's no confusion.
And Mr. Sutton, okay, so the windows that make up the second story, is there actually going to be something in there? Is that just aesthetics?
Those those are more statics for curb appeals.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And Mr. Sutton, let me ask you, do you have a problem if I put in there for the condition to, I'd like to have screening all the way around. The areas because there is that one that one side here that does not have any screening.
Uh are you speaking? We are going to add the screening, the trees on the John Rainey side.
Okay.
What we'd like to do on on the the back of the property, that is a very dense wooded area. And we have a thirty, we've increased that from twenty to thirty feet and we're we're going to build a thirty feet. But we're trying to preserve as much of the natural wood in there and then supplement as we go.
Well, that was my point. I don't want you to to take down anything. I just want it to be as dense as it possibly can be if you need to set another row of screening in front of it. So that it it shields it from the neighbors that have to see it on their front porch.
Our our intention is to keep the wooded area supplemented and so they don't see the cell storage.
Okay, so in the motion, it will be to to maintain the current uh architectural finishes. And to make sure that all areas that can possibly be screened be screened for maximum density. Make that form of a motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. All right, any other uh let's see. Let me go through some comments here. Uh the site plan amendments, they they did reduce the buildings. They removed parking area for boats and RVs. Move secondary entrance, uh increase the buffer area. Uh from twenty to twenty-five and thirty feet, increase vegetative screening. Staff comments, higher standards described in the building elevations could change unless added mutually agreed upon condition of approval. The applicant mentioned shielding the lighting, um so you'll be doing that. Okay, any other concerns?
Do I need to make? I didn't make the motion.
Uh I'm actually gonna um allow for um what. So. Remind me, so you.
We made the motion with the conditions. I wanted to make the motion to approve Z O five dash twenty-two.
Anything else before we do that?
I make that motion that we approve Z O five twenty-two.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, no. All right, thank you very much. All right, uh we've got um Shane. Shane, you're up. Uh we're gonna, I tell you what, we're gonna take um five minute recess, if that's okay. We'll reconvene, get going again. What do I have to do that for? Okay, uh I'm going to make a motion. We excuse Judy from the remainder of the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Welcome, Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for sticking around.
Your thing.
Yes, sir.
You want to read the statement? Just to be all official on everything.
The hearing for consideration of S U P O three two two is now in session. We'll focus on an application submitted. A network building and consulting to construct a satellite earth base station for high-speed internet service on tax parcel five six eight. That's zero two two located at three hundred block on up and of upright road. If you feel any member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now. Prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. One, they'll approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions, or two, continue the request, or three, deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify may state must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible and Shane will be presenting the case for the county. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shane Stewart, Rowland County Planning Office, four oh two North Main Salisbury. Request before us this evening here is from applicant network building and consulting and today is represented by Paul Whitley in the audience here. And this request is on behalf of their client, Amazon Kuiper Infrastructure LLC. If you look at the vicinity map here, you'll see the small little dot in red and this is upright road. It is a public road gravel and extends off of Sloan Road, which is north off of one fifty Mooresville Road. And for reference, if you go due east, you'll find Sloan Park, which is about one point one miles away. Looking at a twenty-one photo, you see the property outlined in red, uh one point one acres. It's zoned RA. Primarily farm. There's a little section here in the front that was a former uh utility compound, gravel fenced area. Must have been for Transco back in the day, but it's been grown up now, little bit of wooded area here. And for reference, you have adjacent Duke Energy High Tension Line, two hundred foot right away. And then on the other side, Transco's pipeline, a hundred foot uh for natural gas. And adjacent to that, there's also the, will you pronounce it, Vivics Communications. It serves the Williams Transco line and supports that facility as a specific uh use for that utility only. Probably not the easiest to see, but here's the site and the one point one acres. Here's upright road and from this image here, you have the proposed ground compound in the back. A driveway that extends off upright road and to focus on the area in the back. And the request here specifically is for a wireless support structure. And normally we'll see those in the form of a monopole tower for uh solar service with data as well. But in the same category, we also have um other communication services. This will be a satellite earth base station for high-speed internet. That'd be something offered for Rowan residents and a variety of other folks within the region. And again, this is a earth-based station, so not to get technical, it talks with low orbit satellites throughout, you know, the earth. And of course, with this location, I believe they have another facility planned elsewhere. That collectively will provide that uh coverage for individuals in the region. So within the fence compound, again, it's a little bit difficult to see on the screen here, but this is a driveway leading in, a little turnaround area. Got a double swing gate for vehicle entrance, pedestrian entrance here. And within this, all this would be gravel. And staff did encourage the applicant to consider the fifty-seven stone, which is a large stone that. For all intents and purposes, is not considered impervious, so therefore we don't have to in the watershed to use our S and I allocation, so we save that there. So the nominal amount of concrete and other things that are provided are under twelve percent. So all this will be by right. Within the compound, you have a series of dishes that are eight foot in diameter, along with the support base. The overall height is between thirteen and fifteen feet. So we we have a location of the Mill Bridge Scenic Byway that runs along Sloan Road. Have a little bit of a view from Sloan to the facility. Um we'll we'll touch on that momentarily, but. Unlike a lot of these compounds, you have a um a fenced facility that's chain-linked with their proposing solid metal. Ten foot green in color. Won't go into all the details why, but. You know, for the purpose of their application to address RF um overlap with other frequencies, this is per the applicant needed. But staff encouraged them to consider some type of evergreen to really screen the compound and also the fenced area. So. Little image here of a false holly is proposed. That's the little icons you see surrounding the north. East and also the south side of the facility. Provide that little buffer so they'd be four foot tall at time of planting and five on center. In the upper left with Sloan Road at your back, looking down upright road facing sort of in a north direction. This is the access driveway for one neighbor. This is the closest to the property, the Wilson Residence, two seventy-five upright road. The compound area would back up to this road and be on the other side of this Vivics compound in the wooded area here. Continuing up where the subject property is, this location in the wooded area before the power lines. There's, I believe, five houses. You can't see from the image, but there's a little cluster right before the creek here. And then on the lower two images, Transco right away facing southwest, all um open. And then on the lower two images, Transco right away facing southwest, all open land, few houses beyond the picture here, and facing back southeast towards Sloan Road and Vivics compound here. And from Sloan Road, you won't be able to see it very clearly, but the Vivics locations here, the proposed facility here. It's about eleven hundred feet away. And continuing on up Sloan Road, here's upright, again, this is the location here. Keep in mind the dishes, I think, are not gonna be more than fifteen feet tall. And this is probably a good image too, to indicate, as best I can tell, this is the high point of the region at, I wanna say eight, twelve, and this may be four to six feet lower. May have the numbers off a little bit, but it's primarily on a similar plane. That's one of the reasons why the facility is on the backside of the property. And at two seventy-five upright road, the Wilson Residence, you can see it here. Here's the right away for Duke Energy and the proposed sites just to the right of the image here. And on this image, it'd be to the left, and here is the Vivics compound. They do have one dish there. Again, that's just for their communications. This is internet broadcast for everybody, so it's much like a broadcast tower in the same category. Few other little images here, just to take you a tour. One thing that I didn't touch on that, just for the sake of time, in the staff report, we do address the required criteria. Again, lining up with typical telecommunications towers, so you can see where all those staff believe have been addressed. So one of the things required is photo simulations around the area. Think a two-hundred-foot tall tower and what that might look like to the landscape. So this is gonna be a much less and much more focused area where you usually use the quadrants of the nearest public road, which we only have two here. And we use this driveway here that leads to the Wilson Residence as the four points for consideration. So using this approach, it works view one, two, three, and four along the private driveway. And again, the compound rear is right here, and this is the last view four on the west side of upright. So you see, this is not a perfect simulation, this is a different variety, but it gives you an idea. It's a ten-foot tall, green metal fence with some vegetation. Every image you'll see a little different take on the, what would be protruding above that point, but this is one of those six dishes you see here. As we come closer to the intersection, there's the Wilson Residence there, the dishes here. And a view back, there's the compound. And it blends in with the corn right here. As with any telecommunication request, we used our county consultant, Cityscape. Pretty lengthy document, about ten pages where they go through, and it gets pretty technical on the FCC side with all the information, if you read it. But the synopsis is, in their opinion, it didn't have a problematic effect on the residence. Not worked with this specific consultant with Cityscape before. Most of the ones we've worked with before have all been telecommunications towers, so this is a different consultant they pulled in that was knowledgeable about the Amazon Kuiper project. Land use plan does not have any recommendations for the specific use. It's located in Area One. We do have, and part of this is along with the consultant, they provided some recommendations for the commissioners to consider. The fifth one here we added is a PE certification on the as-built documentation to substantiate that non-pervious or in, non-impervious gravel for the facility to be under that twelve percent. So we do need a motion to adopt the findings of fact, three separate motions. I've passed out some staff example findings, if the board wants to consider those. And we also need a motion to approve, deny, or table. Several folks sworn in here, and again, I would recognize too, Mr. Paul Whitley as the applicant on behalf of Network Building and Consulting. Any questions of the board?
Shane, just a question for you personally. Not trying to be funny. Do you think maybe we should approach the planning board to put something together? Since we don't have anything currently in our zoning for these type of structures?
For like broadcast towers and telecommunications?
Sure. Okay, can we do that?
We can. Is there any specific thing that you want them to look at?
Anytime we have a gap in our zoning, you know, if we can clean it up, you know, let the planning board do the study and bring it to us to see what they think would be best. Because this, this doesn't seem to be something that's going away. I mean, I can only see this expanding. So I'd like to have some type of guidelines for them to go by, so we don't end up putting it in somebody's front yard.
And that would be more for the land use plan recommendations?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else for Shane? If not, with the applicant, they have anything for us?
My name is Paul Whitley. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I work for Network Building and Consulting, six zero nine five Marshall Lee Drive, Oak Ridge, Maryland, two one zero seven five. I'm here on behalf of Amazon Kuiper Infrastructure LLC. Just like to start out, I don't wanna repeat everything that Shane did, so I'd like to thank him for doing a good detailed job on what we're proposing. I'm here to answer any questions about the proposed facility, if you have any questions.
Oh, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that was sworn in, has anything to say?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Wise. I'm a resident at sixteen seventy Sloan Road, which is the property that is behind this. Me and a couple of the residents of the neighborhood had a bunch of questions about what all was going on up there. We know that Williams Pipeline is there, there's nothing we can do about it. Matter of fact, most of us are pretty fine with it, actually helps to grow and grow taller. We're okay with that. But then we would have heard that there was gonna be a satellite station put up there. That's when a bunch of our eyebrows raised, going, what are they trying to do? And then we got to thinking, three months back, there was another utility company come through there and run broadband cable wires from the corner of Graham Road and one fifty, down one fifty, down Sloan, and then down upright to the proposed location. And that's when we started piecing two together, they're gonna try to build something here. Me and a lot of the people around there are actually against this. Like a lot of people from the previous hearing before, we moved out there to get away from everything we don't want following us. We understand that Amazon is wanting to put up satellite dishes there to have communications out there. That's fine, the communication is already there. I already have high-speed fiber optic cable run through my front yard. We don't need it. Nobody on Sloan Road has internet. Everybody on the two ends between Sloan Road on one fifty has internet. Nobody's beating down doors to try to get it.
I'm sorry, just say no one has internet?
Correct.
Cause they don't want it, or just don't, it's not available?
Both. I, just as a whim, I went to the AT&T store here in Salisbury on Inn Street by where the movie theater and the food line is. And I gave my address. I said, hey, can I get internet here? They told me no. I pulled a picture on my phone and gave them the box number of the fiber optic cable in my yard. They said it doesn't exist. And then, like I said, they come and they run new cable down. And they run it right in there. That's fine. But I think that these people are barking up a tree that is gonna get them a whole lot of nowhere. They're wanting to put something there that nobody there actually wants. And also, I will just go ahead and say that the last time that a utility company was out there working on it, it was a subsidiary of Williams, a umbrella corporation that they created, actually tore up the farmland around there, and we actually had to countersue them and won. We don't want them, again, we were courteous and kind neighbors before, we learned our lesson, we don't wanna go down this path again. I don't know what else, much else I can say about that. Thank you.
My name is Rose Lacasse, one eleven Covenant Woods Drive in Salisbury. My husband and I have owned property in Mount Olah since the nineteen seventies, and I am a member of the Mount Olah Historic Preservation Society and was asked to talk to you about the satellite earth station proposed for N B plus C on upright road. This was because of a letter that had been received by the president of the Preservation Society. And so he's going to speak, and he asked me also to speak on some of the issues. Back in two thousand eight, I was on a Mount Olah Preservation Society committee that worked for almost three years to document the roads through the beautiful rural landscapes of Western Rowan. Eventually, we selected the best roads, and hundreds of pages later, submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, an application to be listed on the North Carolina Scenic Byway. After a long period of review, verification, photographing, and editing, the state approved our submissions. Sloan Road became a North Carolina scenic byway. And this is not a process that's given to just everybody who applies and a title that goes there. This is a long, arduous program. When historic preservation is mentioned, most people think of the Historic Register of Historic Places. Sloan Road, which is not a very long road, has three National Register properties. There is Kerr Mill, which is the centerpiece for a very nice county park and is well-used. So the mill is on the National Register. Further along, there is a Dr. Samuel Kerr House. And closer to upright road, there is, from the seventeen hundreds, the Owen Harrison House. The three National Register properties on one county road. That's outstanding. That's just not the sort of thing you run into every day. That's outstanding. And one of the farms on Sloan Road near the upright road intersection is honored by another North Carolina program. It is a century farm, meaning that it has been in the same family for at least a hundred years. So I've taken you down Sloan Road, its own designation as a North Carolina scenic byway. In the presentation, the Historic Register properties, and also the central farm, the century farm designation. So let's look at the application now, because I wanna look at it to criteria. One of the evaluation criteria is section twenty-one fifty-nine, number two, and I'm quoting. It says that the, this is coming from the applicant. It says the immediate and general vicinity is dominated by active crop lands and limited residential development. In other words, they are acknowledging, and I certainly agree, the area is rural, open farmland, agricultural. The criteria for that number two is the use will not significantly detract from the character of the surrounding area. Well, they've just described for you the surrounding area. They're saying that it is dominated by active crop lands and limited residential development. After describing the area of crop land, the applicant then describes Duke Energy, the gas pipeline, and fiber optics presence. There is no mention at all of how they intend to avoid detracting from the character of the surrounding area. So I don't think we have gotten enough information to justify that they are saying that they will not detract from it, because they haven't done anything to tell us what they're going to do. They've only pointed out that there are three other companies that are on that site. That does not relieve them, that relieves the applicant of his obligation to be present to that value. He has to show that it will not significantly detract from the character of the surrounding area. Right now, on to another criteria. This one is criteria section twenty-one dash fifty-nine. This is number six, and the criteria says use will not create significant visual impacts for adjoining properties or passersby. The diagram you've just seen from Shane shows a fence on three sides of the property, well, sort of three sides. And it is described as a ten-foot fence, probably painted green, and planted with about four-foot-high vegetation, evergreen shrubs. According to the letter that had been sent to the Preservation Society, the satellite dishes would be no taller than twenty feet and located on land that is about ten feet above the road and the surrounding farmland. In other words, this green metal fence would cover the foundation and the lower parts of the six satellite dishes from view. It would not keep most of the six satellite dishes from view by the road or local farmers. Some neighbors have suggested to us that the area could be planted trees around that fence, and eventually it would make it blend into the area. But N B plus C has rejected other sites in their application, in their formal application, because they had trees around them. So it's clear that the project is not looking for a site that they would build a wooded area around. They have rejected current sites because they had trees. So they are looking for a site that would be visible to passersby. Views of more than, and they've also pointed out the distance between this proposed site, proposed project, and some of the farmland. Views of more than a thousand feet in open farmland is common. It's just looking across a few acres of land, either yours or your neighbor's land. So a thousand feet does not mean that it's a distance that somebody couldn't see. It's an ordinary view in open farmland. When you look out, you're probably seeing a lot more than a thousand feet when you look at it. So while this project should be welcomed into Rowan County, the site that is being chosen is not the most appropriate and would, we would be looking for a site that had few trees and would not be on the scenic byway to make a more appropriate location for the project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board. My name is James Rollins. I live at one four four six zero North Carolina Highway eight oh one. And I'm here on behalf of myself and also as a member and officer of the Mount Olah Historic Preservation Society. Y'all got so much technological junk here, I can't get my paper. There we are. Thank you. I wanna take, just can I take, take an aside? I've been here since the beginning of this meeting, and it's been a long time since I've been up here. Probably appreciate that, Jay, more than any of them. But you folks have the patience, Job. You've listened to all these people with differing perspectives. They're all protective of their homes, they're protective of their right to make a living. And then I assume you have the wisdom of Solomon also, you have to make those hard decisions. Thank you for your service, and thank you for everyone who has come and stayed. I have two issues. I don't know if I have enough time to get both of them, but the first one, Mr. Green and Mr. Pierce asked Shane, when he was up here, if he could take a look at, to find something that more specifically focused on this issue. It's kind of a different thing. When I received a letter asking me to comment on this, I called staff, and staff told me right where to get the, all the, he said, "All the information is on your consent agenda." So that's where I went, and I reminded myself that it takes a long time to read through these things, but be patient. And I did, but like you, Mr. Pierce and Mr. Green, it, there was something about wireless facilities, but they're not just exactly like this proposed one. Co-locations, what the term I remember us using, and obviously, the the staff has worked with the applicant in trying to find a place that would be best suited. I would like to read just a little bit, and I know y'all read them all the time, but special use requirement, Section 2164A. It talks about, "For new wireless support structures, the county encourages the applicant to investigate preferred site and those locations that minimize the impact to the North Carolina scenic byway corridor." This is what Mrs. Lacass spoke to you about. But it goes on, and this part is not in the staff report, but it's in the ordinance. It says, "In the event the new wireless support structure cannot be located at a preferred site, evidence that the applicant has investigated the possibilities for co-location on an existing wireless support, wireless support structure shall be printed with its application." And then it says, "A minimum of evidence should contain the following." And now, on the you get over here to the staff report. On the second page of the staff report, in the middle of the first paragraph, paragraph label number one, it says, "Page two and three of the enclosed project information include a general description of sites considered, along with a simple explanation of why nearby towers are not suitable." Staff has no concerns regarding the degree of this information that was provided. But when I read and reread the requirements, they're not asking for general information. They're asking for specific. I could not find those in the packet. They may be there. If so, you could point them out to me. Number one, under new wireless support structure, says that at a minimum, the evidence should contain copies and responses of certified letters to owners and operators of existing structures with telecommunications facilities within the search ring, and includes the following: the height, the existing tenants, whether the existing site could accommodate an addition. And four said, "If the addition of their wireless facilities cannot be accommodated, an assessment of whether the existing site could be upgraded, and a general description of the means and projected cost shared on the tower." The ordinance, to the contrary of staff comments, requires specific documented evidence of the applicant's investigation of all alternative sites, along with a list of those. That list was provided, but the list did not seem to include competent substantial and material evidence. To the contrary, they would simply say there wasn't, and I'll read from, let me read directly so I don't misquote anyone. Under section, Site Selection Analysis, the Amazon began by considering nearby existing communication structures for location, the two closest being an American Tower on Mooreville Road and Caldwell Road, and SBA on Tower Road, on G. Goodnight Road. It said that the traditional communications facility, the nature of the the Amazon facility prevents co-location to these existing telecommunications towers from a viable option. Well, my understanding was that they were supposed to send certified communications to these existing sites and receive certified communications back with specific evidence as to why those sites were unsuitable. The project description states that 9,000 square feet will be the portion of the site that will be, actual have the satellites on it. 9,000 square feet, it is not that large, you know, 100 by 100. I didn't see any evidence where they asked if some of these existing sites could be expanded, could their structures be enforced? And that's what I expected to find, given our regulations and our ordinance, specific information. The, I was even a little bit surprised when they listed Sloan Park as a possibility. It seemed like an unlikely place, and then two churches, Tha Tower and Bat Creek. The other places, they said there were, there was no proximity to significant fiber services, but there's no documentation to show where there is fiber and where there's not fiber, and what fiber they need. So the long and short of what I'm saying is that the, the code requires specific reasoning. It requires written documentation in response, and I find that the applicant has not included all the required information, and the application therefore is incomplete. And in your code, at 2158, the review procedures says that incomplete applications should be returned to the applicant with deficiencies noted. My recommendation, and our recommendation, is the applicant, we return the application for completion and encourage the location to a more suitable and appropriate site, like an industrial park where other facilities of a similar nature are found. Thank you, and Marion's going to show you a tour of this site. And then if I have, could have a little bit more time, I would like to speak to the scenic byway. Could I let her show you what, and then come back?
Hello. Good to see you guys here. I don't know how you do it, because I'm getting old. But anyway, I'm Marion Rollins. I live in Maldona at 14460 NC Highway 801, and I'm still farming, believe it or not. I'm a good raker of hay. We have, I have a virtual tour, a visual tour of the site. Have some out here, too. Yep, I've got to have one. And I want you to look carefully at it. I had to just get rough with my computer to get this done. And I had to do my artwork as well. But we are looking at a facility that is, has a road that's hardly wide enough for two cars to even go down. We, Upright Road is an unusual place. If you will look at number one, the visual there shows the beginning of Upright Road, and it curves down and around, farming on both sides. You can, you can see that. And the second picture in the middle is that this is a wildlife preserve. We have to preserve our wildlife. The third picture shows the wildlife preserve, and it is a place where people hunt, quail, they do quail, they are interested in keeping the creek healthy. I mean, this is not a place for metal. It is not an industrial site. And if, if I would ask you how many people put boots on the ground on Upright Road, if you did, you would fall in love with the area. And I'm not going to ask you, but I wish you would. Down with, with the first picture, the furzacks, if you go across the creek and come up, a family known as furzacks live there, and their land, a lot of it is under a conservation easement. Wetlands and conservation easement, farming, wildlife. It is a preserve. Why else would you have a road that wasn't wide enough hardly for a buggy to go down? If you, if two cars meet, you better hit the ditch. So proposed for this area, Upright and Sloan Road, Second Creek, there are game lands, fields, pastures, woodlands, wetlands, wildlife preserves, and long, long view sheds. There are even century farms and barns. When we, number seven. James, I'm going to have to ask you to tell about number seven, because I am, oh. Is this the site of the, thank you. I wanted you to be here, because I know how smart you are. Okay, it is the site for the earth satellite station, and, and that's the backside, and it's going to be very visible. There's, there's nothing that's going to hide it. Am I correct, James? From Upright Road? And I was, I was disheartened by the fact that number eight, I'm skipping around, y'all. This is not good. Number eight, we found the hearing posters that were put there. You know, what were they put there for? Nobody ever goes down that road hardly, except the people that live there, who knew about it. And I know that you have only certain things that you have to do. You, you just put them up, and they blew down. Well, that's the weather for you. But James and I went there, and we put them up on the pole, and we tied them. We tied them up. Y'all, y'all need to get us for trespassing, okay? But we are, we are really trying to stress the fact that there are places there to hunt quail. There is a scenic byway within within 1,200 feet approximately, and I actually walked that walk on number nine. Look at number six at the bottom. There is an old house that's been converted to a barn, to a barn-type business, and there is a silo in the back, if you can see that. My camera wasn't too good there. But anyway, the character of this area is rural scenic. And we don't need to be permitting earth stations that move around and send satellite images into the air here. And my question to the people that are doing this is, how in the world are they going to, if we have cables already in the ground, how is the electromagnetic field going to work? If they can't put up big, tall trees or whatever to buffer it, where's that signal going? Is it going out to Tom Wiltson's house, which is not very far away? I mean, they rotate. What, what comes off the edge of them? Where are the satellites here? How does it work? I, I just would appreciate some of the commissioners putting boots on the ground. I'm not trying to change the world, and I know I can't do it at age 79, but I can, I can sure as heck rake a field of hay beautifully. Thank you for listening.
That's a great arc that's underappreciated these days. Thank you so much. I said, her raking abilities is underappreciated these days. Absolutely.
I may just have a couple more minutes. Y'all have been so patient. Put my stuff back together. Wish I had a good joke. I want to kind of pick up on what Marion said and say something else about what Rose said about the corridor. I, I know, I have some people who ask me if I'm a member of that hysterical society, you know, the one that's trying to preserve everything. So be tolerant of me, but in the first paragraph on the staff report, I found where it said, "The following requirement of the applicant is his request is subject to the issuance of a special use permit, compliance with the associated six specific special use criteria, and compliance with the six general special use criteria." The ones I'm going to refer to are in the, if you want to follow with me, the applicant put them on the last page. No, the first one is at the bottom of the second page. Adequate transportation. The use will not significantly detract from the character of the surrounding area. The use will not create significant visual impacts for properties or passersby. These are all visual things, but we believe that the applicant has failed to meet some of those required standards. The location and character of the proposed satellite ground station, we don't feel like will, is we feel like it will not be in general harmony with the surroundings of the area, and the use will significantly detract from the character of the area. The use and existence of the proposed facility will create a significant visual impact for the neighbors and passersby. will create a significant visual impact for the neighbors and passersby. So, the question is, what is the character? What is the intrinsic quality of the surrounding area? I think the applicant is trying to convince us that it's this pre-existing unpermitted, before zoning, uh, in my opinion, ugly, but ugly's uh, existing pipeline, satellite dish and two diesel generators that ba- are backup. And that's what they're using to justify the existing of theirs, which looks similar. But that's not what the area looks like. The character is best described uh, that I could find in a annual report from the North Carolina Department of Transportation Scenic Byway uh, book. And I just wanna read you quickly two paragraphs that they have been to the same site. The Upright Road, Sloan Road site. They're saying that along this route is an unusual absence of non-agricultural commercial activity. That's an absence, which enhances the uninterrupted view of the farmsteads, the pastures, the fields, the forests, the ponds, the protected wildlife, wetlands. And because of the varying topography of the rural vistas are often long and many farmhouses are old. Some of the log construction with several century old log barns are along the way, as well as Sloan Park, Kerr Mill or tourist attractions that provide recreational and educational opportunities. Farming and its related activities provide the economic basis along this scenic route, this byway, this scenic corridor. And includes three thousand five hundred acres that was transferred from Conapolis to the central, the Land Trust of Central Carolina, which is now Three Rivers and the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission to ensure the conservation of these areas and the wetlands' natural beauty. This board in um, the code in two thousand nine, established a farmland preservation program, including ag and enhanced ag districts to discourage non-agricultural development. To slow down the loss of farmland. I don't know what today's statistics are. In two thousand ten, North Carolina was lose, was losing a hundred thousand acres a year of farmland to development. In two thousand three, Rowan County adopted a text, Z zero six oh three, which states, "The county encourages the applicant to select locations which will minimize and limit visual impacts to historically significant structures along the North Carolina, with the North uh, Carolina Scenic Byway." In two thousand eight, Rowan County adopted a resolution and sent a letter to N C D O T supporting the addition of an extension along the Millbridge Scenic Byway, which includes Sloan Road, Upright, Kerr Mill and this section of Seals Creek. The North Carolina D O T Scenic Byway Program's goal is to, quote, "Identify and highlight scenic roads with unusual, exceptional, or unique qualities for public viewing and enjoyment." To achieve this goal, they have created and certified over sixty routes throughout North Carolina for our visual and natural beauty and enjoyment. By contrast, the proposed facility, I believe, is an anomaly. It is non-agricultural. It is commercial. It is a metallic facility. It's not like a silo, which goes next to a barn or a John Deere tractor or a combine. It's radically different from the existing natural and agricultural environment of Upright Road. As such, the proposed facility would become a disharmonious stigma. It would distract from the natural beauty of the area while simultaneously creating a precedent for future similar proposals. We would urge you, please, please, cite this facility somewhere else. Thank you very much for your patience.
It depends on what you want, because one, there's no search ring. I guess, I don't know philosophically if this could be the whole county or what. Um, but you know, if you look at the location where they're at, um, I think it's a given every time we have a request. I think we had one on uh, Saint Peter's Church Road, a new tower coming in on near Hill Road. There's a Duke Energy High Tension Line right there. They, they won't let you put six dishes on there. Do we need a letter to make that decision? That would be up to this board. I don't even know if Duke would give them a letter. Um, I guess you could provide certified letter, no response received. There, there's your information. Um, as far as the citing of preferred sites, it references churches, parks and whatnot. So, I think it's a given that Sloan Park wouldn't be a good location for this. That's why they didn't pursue it. Um, that's not so much naked, making an assertion of, oh, this is great and sufficient information. But we felt like after six months working with the applicant, this is enough for the board to consider. The criteria listed, and again, this is different than a broadcast tower. You first look, here's your search ring. What can we use inside that search ring? There's not one. Um, I guess that would be a pretty good debate if we had a, a tower application come in and say they don't have a search ring. Um, I've had those conversations before with an applicant. This, not really playing that card, but we do wanna see what you're, where are you looking? Well, that search ring can be a pretty small area. So, they, they could also game that. So, if to that point, they've, they've selected a site, is this a good one or not? Then it's up to the board to decide, do you want more information on? In fairness to the applicant, I'll let him address this. After probably four versions of this, we said, you need to put something in your submittal that addresses this criteria. You know, we, we can't tell them this is what you need to say, but that's what they come up with. And we felt like that was probably enough to go on. Otherwise, you have a view of, I don't know, Western Rowan or the whole county where this could be placed. The criteria in here too, is predicated on a new tower for Verizon, for example. We need coverage here. Let's look and see what we've got. This is a little different animal, being that it's internet-based. It's not a tall structure. So, when it references minimize the impact of the scenic corridor, we did try to address that with landscaping. Um, you know, it does say minimize. It doesn't say um, conceal hundred percent. So, again, that's up to the board. Is that enough? Um, with the technology, I can't say for sure, but it sounds like they need some distance from, from these dishes. So, there's not coverage issues with their frequency projected on. Um, but there is gonna be differences, how you compare this use to a typical tower. They're gonna have co-locations. That's definitely one nuance is different. We're talking about two hundred foot tow- tower. If you build one, we wanna have space where you can co-locate on it. So, again, this is not the same animal. Their transmission dishes. So, this is, and I actually have some notes here. I can address some of the concerns here. Um, this locate, sorry. This location was picked. And from our perspective, it kind of addresses all the concerns that were said here tonight. Um, basically, it does preserve the impact of the surrounding area because we don't have to put a nine thousand square foot facility next to a church or next to another area that's public, where we would have to dig up the ground. And like they were saying, they don't want more fiber. Well, if we go to a different location, we more than likely have to run fiber across properties to get fiber to this location. The reason this location was picked is because there's fiber in the Lumen facility that's right in front of it. So, they tap into that fiber. So, there's no need to run across anyone's properties. It minimizes the impact on the surrounding area. Um, the trees, they can't exceed the the, the trees, they can't exceed the top of the fence because there is a signal that shot out from the satellite. Now, the satellites communicate, or the dish antennas communicate with a satellite, which then in turn sends the signal. This coordinates with facilities all across the U S. So, it's a national effort. This is gonna provide wireless broadband across the U S. So, this is not just for this neighborhood. It's statewide, nationwide. So, the solution here is, well, he went to the A T and T store. He can't get service. This is a solution to that. So, this is another option for people who might not be able to get service. It's also competition. So, when competition's in the neighborhood, it lowers the prices of the people who are there. Um, so, these dish antennas are fairly large. So, they cannot co-locate on a telecommunications tower. And kind of to jump on what Mr. Dees was talking about, the code is written for telecommunications structures and towers. This was the closest thing to what we're proposing. This is really a communication facility. And a lot of these items don't apply to what we're proposing because you can't look at existing structures and rule them out because you can't put the dish antennas. These dish antennas communicate with satellites straight up. So, if you tried to mount them on the side of a tower and point them up, the tower's gonna fall over. Uh, structurally, these towers can't hold these larger dish antennas. But that's another reason they can't go on these structures. Um, there's separation from the dish antennas. It has to be met. That's the reason why it's nine thousand square feet. So, to push all these on one structure would be catastrophic and they wouldn't work. Um, this proposed facility um, will not have adverse effects on, I don't believe there's any wetlands or woodlands on this property. Um, I know that one of the residents pointed out that people hardly drive down this road. So, we want an area that less people drive and not more. So, if we move this to a more populated area where people are driving by, it's gonna be seen by a whole lot more people. So, then it's more obtrusive than less obtrusive. And then the metal fence, I know there was some concern about this shooting in someone's house. The ten-foot metal fence is an R F barrier. That's required by the F C C. So, if for some reason this dish antenna was shooting out, that metal fence blocks that signal from going out of this compound. So, that's kind of the need for the metal fence. And then we put the screening in there to, as a buffer. And we're gonna paint the metal fence green to kind of go with that. Then the only thing I would say is, um, I know the code says significant effects. When they pick these sites, they look at leaseability, constructability, um, and if we can zone it. But with the code, there's really not a place for a facility like this. But we went with a telecommunications structure and tried to meet that code as much as we could, based on the criteria that we have proposed. Um, as far as utilizing existing fiber, this site has fiber there. So, again, we don't have to cross any properties or anything else. We can utilize what's there. But from our standpoint, this is the most feasible location with the least impact on the surrounding area. Any other questions? It's the option that's required by the F C C. Um, that's an R F barrier that they put up to avoid that signal from going out. If we were to put a chain link fence and that antenna pointed out, it's not gonna block that R F from going out of the facility. Uh, brick would not hold as, as much as the metal one. That's why it's, it's a government mandated requirement.
Is there a um, is there a way to make uh, aesthetically look like something that would be on a farm?
I mean, it's something that I could look into. But I guess my question would be, on a farm, what would be that ten-foot high? Cause this facility's only ten-foot high. It's not like a silo. So, while, you know, a lot of times they build these telecommunications towers, we're kind of going back into that to look like a silo and a flagpole and a tree. This is a ten-foot-high facility. When you get into getting creative with a ten-foot-high fence, I mean, I, I don't know what we could do. I mean, we could explore options of painting something else on the side, but I'm not sure what we could paint on.
Wonder if the um, Historical Society could paint something on the side of it for you or put one of their quilts out there.
Paint it maroon like a barn.
Something, I don't know. They do the.
I know, we'd be open to painting in a different color. If you want maroon or something that would look like a barn, could paint it a different color.
Just brainstorming. Barn quilt, yeah.
Yeah. We are keeping the same size of the facility that's there now, right? You're not asking for an increase.
Correct. I believe it's approximately one hundred and ten by eighty.
And there is, the fence is already there, right?
No, this would be a new fenced.
Okay, so it's right now, what you have there is visible to the community.
No, this, this facility is not there right now. The, the photos that we provided are photo simulations of what would be there after we constructed.
I understand.
Oh, the Lumen facility is in front of it. But we would be building back behind the Lumen facility.
All right, that's what I couldn't get in my head.
Thank you. Passed out. One-page sheet.
All right. Well, we're going to close the hearing then. On our next item. I need to figure out which I've been looking through this and lots of pictures in here. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to get back back and forth on this.
Well, the thing about it, Mr. Chairman, is the, is it Lumina? Facility looks much worse than what's Bill, I think they should contact them and see if they're willing to put up some rubbery around that. I think that I think it'd be better if they could try to work with these two groups to make the outside look a little better than they are, but makes the
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say my opinion on this is that we have been inundated for the last four years. The people in the western part of the county wanting to have internet service that wasn't satellite bid and something that was economical. And we have worked diligently to do that. And this is just going to be one more piece of that puzzle that we need to put together. And you know, this ain't like the radio tower that everybody was upset about years ago. And you know, this structure is 10 feet high. I mean, I know plenty of farms that their barns are a whole lot taller than that that can be seen. And you know, at, at some point in time, we have to decide, do we want to advance our county into the 21st century or do we want to stay in the 1900s? And this is just one more piece of it. I mean, we've invested millions of dollars, and unfortunately it was federal dollars, to bring this capability to this portion of our county, just like down at the lake. We've invested money down there to bring internet service down there because of the poor capabilities there. So are we doing ourselves an injustice by trying to hold back everything that comes down the line just because we don't want to see what it looks like? I mean, I'm sure I could drive you down through there and show you a ton of single-wide mobile homes that ought to be burned down or torn away because of how they look, but nobody wants to talk about that. It's just when we want to bring technology in, all of a sudden we're the bad guys. So you know, in my opinion, it's time we moved on, put this county into the 21st century and did what we need to, to take care of hundreds and if not thousands of requests that we received to bring internet service affordability down to the western part of the county.
At length in the last few years. Twice in the early 70s. Ultimatum, but they want to work from home for Amen. And I make that in a form of emotion. Opened of the property.
Second. Hi. Second. Hi.
Third, location and character.
Second. Hi. So move.
Second. All in favor, say it.
Bye.
Carlisle House, yeah.
All right. So we have a request, HLC 0222 for the Carlisle Sherrill's House for a local designation. The owner is John Carlisle Sherrill. It's located at 14175 North Carolina 801 Highway. That's tax parcel 566048. So some quick background, this was built in 1938 by Charles Henry Brown in the colonial revival style and was connected to the economic development of Mount Olah and western Ryan County by developing a mill industry and other commercial retail business in the area. So the house was built slightly east of the side of the Price Sherrill bungalow and northeast of the frame garage with the Sherrill family continue to use to date. Its brick construction is symmetrical facade, represent features of the Antebellum Rankin Sherrill House. While its colonial revival style was in contrast to the Greek revival character of the earlier home. John Carlisle Sherrill was engaged in two major building projects in Mount Olah in the 1920s. First, in 1923, he moved into the two-story 19th century frame store back on the store lot. And then the south, he erected a sizable two-story brick store building. Its symmetrical facade featured a center recessed first entrance flanked by a large plate glass display windows. Five-base second story elevation below a horizontal recessed brickwood panel. Later in 1930, Mr. Sherrill entered into a lease agreement with Standard Oil Company of New Jersey to install gasoline pumps in front of the store. Mr. and Ms. Sherrill occupied the house until their deaths. Several of the house's six-story, six second-story bedrooms were also rented to Ms. Sherrill's fellow teachers at the Mount Olah School in the 1930s and 40s. Following Anita Mueller Sherrill's death in 1977, her heirs conveyed this house to John Carlisle Jr. And in 1980, John Carlisle Jr. and his wife conveyed the house to, in the grounds in the 1.180 acres to their only son, John Carlisle III and his wife. So the statement of significance for this property, the architecturally significance of the John Carlisle and Anita Sherrill House derives from its dual importance of being both a note or the example of a village house in colonial revival style and one of the rare examples of this style as a pharmacy. The Carlisle Sherrill House is historically significant in Ryan County. For architecturally, it's one of the remaining colonial revival farmhouse houses. It is culturally significant as the home of Ryan County's most important entrepreneurial families. Carlisle Sherrill House is one of two architectural landmarks in Mount Olah. This along with the Rankin Sherrill House along the adjacent lot. Staying as the principal reminders of the family's milling and mercantile operations in the village. Spending three generations of ownership and a critical role to John Carlisle Sherrill in shaping the civic and commercial life of Mount Olah in the first half of the 20th century. In 1937 to 38, when the house was built as the seat of Mr. Sherrill's farming operations, also the home of Mount Olah's merchant and mill owner. As such, it represents an important example of the final phase of important farmhouse construction in a rural Ryan County that existed that closed with World War II. After the war, there was very little important domestic building in the Ryan County countryside as textile mills were returning veterans to their plants along with many of the other county's sons and daughters. When the agricultural economy enabled construction of the next generation of farm residences, there were a rare variant of the one-story suburban ranch houses. So we have the architectural description of each of the four elevations here. And then as far as additions and alterations, 1989 during Hurricane Hugo, a lot of the trees that were around the house were were damaged and had to be torn, had to be cut down. Some of them were replaced with newer trees. At 1990, the wooden deck was added across the back of the house. And then in 2001, the original terrace carried fully across the north elevation, the sun parlor. The eastern portion of the terrace was damaged by freezing water that penetrated the mortar that has been taken up prior to rehabilitation. So these are the four elevations of the house. This is what's, the house and the 1.18 acres it sits on is what's being designated. And then as far as procedures, we need to conduct a public hearing and then approve, deny, or table the request and the designation ordinance. If you have any questions, both me and the owner are here today.
Public hearing and
So move. Second. I'll make a motion.
A second again.
Wonderful.
There we go.
Want to hear it if you do.
Carlisle, go back and tell everybody in Mount Olah, we passed this thing. Okay? No up.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
About halfway through.
Hello, mister.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah, pretty extended this evening. Again, thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. I'm not going to Thank you very much. I'm here to present the schedule values for the twenty twenty-three effective in January of twenty twenty-three. We handed out two books to you. This one, the market value and the present use pay. Basically, I just have a few slides to go through. You've had a pretty extended meeting, so I'll just take a.
Often you do what you.
All values are local. Everything comes from what we're seeing in the market. Okay. The reappraisal is the process of updating the real property values. The last time this was done was in twenty nineteen. The reappraisal was effective January first of twenty nineteen. General statutes require we do this at least every eight years. Rowan County advanced that schedule sometime in the past to a four-year cycle. It is that with the exception of what we've seen in the last couple of years, generally, property values increase at a smaller amount than what we've seen. So by doing it more frequently, the impact on the taxpayers is is much less of a shock. Now, what we've seen in the last four years has been pretty look quite a bit different in the real estate market than what we've seen historically. With the objective and by state law, we have to appraise, we try to appraise property at a hundred percent of its market value. As close as possible, we do that by using recent sales. In this case, we've looked at sales since twenty nineteen, the last reappraisal. And but the most emphasis will be on the most recent. But we've noticed there is a little, you know, the market is slowing down a little bit now. You know, I'll get a little bit more detail. We do mass appraisal. We analyze all property sales. And then the characteristics that we analyze in those sales, we apply to all properties. You know, instead of doing an individual fee appraisal and finding comps for each property, you can't do that with eighty eighty-two thousand parcels, we have to do what's called a mass appraisal. The whatever values we determine will stay set from twenty-three until the next reappraisal, which would be scheduled in twenty twenty-seven. Of course, every year we look at appeals of property, we look at demolitions. We look at all new construction. You know, we have a lot of houses being built right now and a lot of industries. All that has to be kept up on an annual basis. We consider three approaches to value in doing our appraisal work. Markets, transactions, which are the sales. We use the cost approach, which is replacement cost of properties where we've got information from local builders. That's and then the income approach is most applicable to commercial properties like apartment complexes and hotels and motels. And looking at sales properties, we tried to we've had sixteen thousand, over almost seventeen thousand since twenty nineteen. And what we looked like, look at for all the and coming up with the sales of properties. Now, there's a lot of sales that happen that are foreclosure, bankruptcy, and we don't consider those types of sales in our sales qualifications. Just some general information, last year there were twelve counties that did reevaluations. The increases that they experienced to the tax base range from fourteen to fifty percent for last year. This year, twenty twenty-three, we have twenty-two counties doing reevaluations this year. And I heard today, there's about five of them presenting their scheduled values tonight. So the the reason we waited this long is to get the most information that we could have and still complete this process before the end of the year.
Because the market is dropping some.
It's changing, but yes. And we're seeing things aren't selling the same day or the two or three days. It seems to be staying a little bit longer and so we're experiencing that. And I wanted to get everything we possibly could to consider that as much as possible in the final values before they're mailed out in February.
I've had folks ask me, are you guys gonna cherry pick the highest point? And your point is no.
That's not, that's not mass appraisal. Mass appraisals, we look at all the sales and we'll look at the trends. And you know, the trends were things were increasing. I didn't bring that level of statistics to talk with you tonight, but the the trends were, things were increasing drastically up until recently. And now it's trending down a little bit. So we gotta look at all the sales for like the last two years is what we're gonna do. The most emphasis will be placed on the most highest volume of those transactions. Rowan County's current sales ratio, the state does a sales ratio every year for all one hundred counties. And the the twenty twenty-two sales ratio, which on this slide, it says twenty twenty-two sales. That's actually twenty twenty-one sales and they turned the sales ratio over to us in twenty-two. So the sales ratio for last year's sales was just over seventy-three percent. And a hypothetical example I put in there, if your house sold for three hundred thousand, typically based on our current sales assessment ratio, we'd have a little over two hundred thousand dollars on it. So and I only put that, that's a hypothetical example showing you that if your house is worth valued at two twenty, it could easily go to three hundred next year. Based on the state sales ratio study. But that's completely hypothetical. That's just an example of what we could experience. Rowan County has eighty thousand five hundred and sixty-three parcels. It, you know, fifty-one thousand are residential, six seven hundred commercial, and we still have a lot of vacant properties.
That's a, it could be vacant land, vacant land.
That's right.
Didn't want folks to think that's twenty-two thousand vacant houses.
Oh, no, it's all vacant properties. Just a little information, the current tax base, based on the current values, seventy-eight percent of that is made up of real estate. Nine percent motor vehicles, five percent public utilities, and eight percent of it is personal property. Now, we're revaluing the real portion for twenty twenty-three. So there's a, there's a possibility that that percentage will increase of the tax base next year. Just a brief overview of the timeline, we started the reappraisal process in May twenty twenty-one. We're still working on it. We will be working on it until we mail the notices out. But the beginning of it started in May. We started final review processes, really studying sales ratios in November of last year, and that's still going on. We have to do that right up until we mail notices. With everything being computerized, if at the last minute, if we see some areas that need to be changed, you know, you know, maybe there's a neighborhood that that the values it clearly sees it should be five percent less than what we thought or or ten percent more, we have those capabilities right up until the very last moment. That's the type of things that we're working on right now. We're talking about modeling, that that's relating to the neighborhoods and how those valuations are applied. But where we're at today, I'm submitting or presenting the schedule values. This is where I need the commissioners, this is what your response, big, one of the big responsibilities in this process is. And I'm, I've asked if we could have a public hearing on November seventh. And then if everything goes well with this process, which I've been in this business thirty-subplus years, this typically is is a pretty straightforward process. This is not a time for the public to, we're not ready to turn the values out yet. We're not there. We're just at the point where I need the commissioners to adopt this. It's basically a toolbox. It's, it's, it's the analysis and the values that we have in the computer and we just need you to approve that so that we can get everything finalized. And then when we mail the notices out in February, that's when the public will be able to find out what their values are. So if we adopt the schedules on the second meeting in November, then what we would be looking at is mailing notices in February. And then that's when we start the appeal process. I basically got my staff members, we're getting geared up for that. We know there's gonna be some changes in values, maybe more so than in previous revaluations. And we're gonna do everything we can do to prepare for that, start that process in February, March, and April. After the informal process is complete, then we go to a Board of Equations Review, which is one of your appointed boards. And that they will do their work in April and May, hopefully fin- finish up in June. And and then it's y'all's job to work on the tax base.
The tax rate.
Yep, tax rate. So and then the bills go out in July. Just, just to summarize, you know, we're still, we're really working on this right now. This is, we're as busy as in the revaluations period of time that we could possibly be. We will be right up until the notices go out. We're watching all sales, every deed that's recorded. That we're trying to get sales qualified and determine whether those should be used in our, our sales studies right up until we get ready to mail notices. One statement that we're seeing from other counties is all property values are gonna change, but they're not gonna all change at the same rate. You know, and by that, I mean neighborhoods in one end of the county may, may change a different percentage than those. Let's say things down in Kannapolis may change differently than those in Cleveland. That's what I'm, I'm trying to explain there. Okay, that's really all I have.
So we did the last revale in two thousand and nineteen. But I think I heard you say that the sales examples that you're using would be in the last two years.
We've been looking at all the sales since twenty nineteen. The most emphasis will be placed on the most recent. But yeah, like the last two years.
And that really, if we were in math class, this really bears out. The the math of it is when you say, when you say most emphasis is placed on, I say recent, maybe in the last two years, that's where the majority of sales are, right? And when, when there's a large number of sales, the the high demand begins to drive price, right? Now, what we're seeing is fewer sales, so folks are dropping the price in order to sell their homes. So all that is getting worked out in the math and it appears you had a date on there as late as January, is it January? You're gonna be looking at the numbers clear up through January.
Right until we get ready to mail.
Required by.
It'll take about two weeks to thirty days to prepare the notices to be mailed. So right up until that time, we'll, we'll look at all transactions through December thirty-first.
And then once you come to us with your values, then we're gonna have to start working on budget in March or February or March, whenever we do that, and then determine what tax rate. But your revale is separate from what the commissioners do.
The the revale will have a, changing the real estate values, the way we're looking at for this revale, it'll have a significant impact on next year's budget. But Aaron, I mean, he's already told me he's like he wants values as soon as he possibly can get them.
So I I just have one more question. What is all this?
That is the, all the rules, anything that you could possibly think that you would need to know about anything about mass appraisal. It's, it's the statutes, it's ethics, it's got all the tables that are in the computer with like a base price. It's impossible to actually hand calculate a value, you know, on your property because there's so many characteristics of your property that have to be taken into consideration. But these are just the base, base rates that for the entire county.
All right, it's a big job. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Just, just so I can understand a little bit better. So with man going down, prices are going down, that's gonna affect your valuation. But that, it doesn't matter what inflation does, it's just whatever the houses do. So if inflation's ten percent, but the values of the houses are going down, different things and it, they don't interfere with each other.
Well, one thing you gotta realize is the values that we're gonna place on it, they they're gonna be based on analysis of all the sales that have occurred with the most emphasis being placed on the last two years. So we're gonna consider the most recent ones and if they're down a little bit, but there's it's hard to compare the values when we're talking about the current values being placed on them in twenty nineteen. But we'll, we look at all the sales with the most emphasis placed on the last two years. And if, if we're seeing a trend down, then those will be kicked in the statistics. By considering the most recent sales, if we're seeing downward trends, we have to take, that will be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I'm just trying to in my mind, because I know, I guess, one evaluation since I've been here was flat, but inflation was really low. And now inflation's really high. Like house prices are starting to go down, so I'm just trying to figure out in my mind how that would work.
See, you're talking, when talking about sales, say from twenty twenty, the the values were placed on the current property in twenty nineteen. We have to do that again for twenty twenty-three and come up with like a median value for all the sales that have led up to this current place that we're at in time, because it's like a snapshot. So we, the sales will, the numbers that you're looking, inflation is changing.
It, one, one thing the board can change is, you know, if you wanted to do another revale in two years rather than four years, you could do that if, if this trend continues, I mean it, which you may, so I mean currently. So, I mean, currently, I know Chip would love to do it every two years. But, I mean, you can go two, four, six, eight.
Through this one first. Well, well, here, here, this, I, I promise, last thing I'm going to say. It, it, I know, it is a math problem, and I just want to explain in an easy term. If, if, if there are ten houses that sell in a time of big demand. The value of those houses are going to be high because of the, the law of supply and demand. But n- now we see that the number of sales is dropping significantly, so people are wanting to sell their house, right? It, so if the average of ten sold was three hundred thousand dollars. And, and now demand is dropping for a lot of reasons, right? Interest rates, uh, a, a whole list of stuff. But now only three sell. Um. That, that even though the, the, the value of the homes is dropping and you're taking that into account. When you're averaging out ten houses sold at three hundred thousand. And now the market is dropping and fewer being sold, so the values are dropping, but you only sold three at two hundred thousand. When you start averaging those numbers, we are, you are giving a nod to the, to the market dropping. And you're going to make some adjustments, but just the sheer math of that.
Right.
It is, is still going to, um, hold up values, um, a- at a higher rate than they were in twenty nineteen. It.
The va- yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if, isn't that kind of what you're saying?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, if that made sense at all.
But we, we recognize there was a peak. There'll be less emphasis placed on those super high sales. There, there are outliers in doing the sales study that we don't pick this. We pick all of them that are kind of in the median. And we have things that, that are below market and things that are above market. We just throw it out. Because we're working with statistics. You know, we're work, we have to have certain statistics. Our level assessment needs to be above ninety for nineteen or for, uh, twenty twenty-three.
So. And, and for the public, I mean, it's, it's a process done by humans, so. If, if citizens feel like their value is, is in error or not accurate, they, everyone has a chance to appeal it.
Alright, so we receive, uh, we're, we're going to receive this, but I make a motion to set a public hearing. For the twenty twenty-three Schedule of Value Standards and Rules on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. Um, all in favor say aye. I'm in trouble already. That's my wife's birthday. So, uh, with, uh, Chip, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anna.
Alright, so I'm gonna let Alan do a quick presentation on the actual radios that we're looking to purchase. And then I'll go over the financing piece. That'll be okay.
Any work coming up front of me?
I'm good, yeah.
There we go. Good evening. I promise I'll be short and to the point and get out of your way. It's been a long evening already. Uh, so we, uh, we started this process, um, over a year ago back in June of twenty twenty-one, but, uh. This is for Royan County. It's cost subscriber radios, but it's portable mobile radios for all public safety in Royan County. Um, so I'm going to go over a little bit about what the RFP was, proposals to save the validation testing and the, the recommendation. Like I said, in July twenty twenty-one, RFP went out. Uh, we asked for project twenty-five, eight hundred megahertz radios, which is what we have now. But this is going to be upgraded to what we have. Acquiring, actually requiring two thousand eighty-four radios is the, the ending number. And they're based for public safety features and a functionality in the public safety realm. Uh, we have current pricing. We also was able to, uh, uh, have the vendor hold pricing for future buys as we needed as well. And we had a lot of, of, uh, sample radios that we use for testing and verification. Uh, we received two proposals in September twenty twenty-one. One's from Motorola and the other one's from Communications International, which offers Harris radios. Both of them were evaluated against four factors, their organizational, structure, function, or specifications, tests, and validation program results and pricing. Motorola proposal was the lowest bid, uh, total cost of seven point nine five million. Uh, both of them were testing. Uh, we actually used, uh, we went to the Boston Heights Fire Department and done several tests with fire trucks. Uh, fans running, chainsaws running. Uh, we put both of them in water, immersed them for five minutes. Dropped them on the floor from the standing position. Uh, we put both of them in oven for three hundred and fifty degrees for, I think it was ten minutes. Uh, the Motorola radio done fine. The other one, not so much. It's a little bit of a, a melted mess when we got it out.
Did you dunk Zimmerman for five minutes?
We did not. We tried, but we didn't. Uh, Motorola radio's passed all the test scenarios. The Harris radio failed a number of the tests. Um, they do, they made some pretty bubbles coming up in the, in the bucket we had them in. Uh, based on our evaluation and based on the, uh, uh, we have federal engineering as I consulted with also. And we do have some federal engineering on her with us. But based on that, we, we, uh, wanted to go with the Motorola radios. And the board actually approved the award to Motorola on May the second of twenty twenty-two. So, again, I told you to be short and sweet. Any questions? Please answer them if you can.
Um, seven point nine five million, um, but we're being asked, maybe this is a question for you. To approve up to eight point six five.
So, um, when we originally went out to get quotes for the, um, financing. They were still working on final numbers of radios, and so the actual proposal's going to come in at seven point nine nine eight. So that's what we're actually going to do a contract for and borrow. So we're, um, that additional amount, I believe, is to help cover some of the closing costs of the radios too. Like with closing the deal, so.
Hundred and fifty grand?
No, it's not that much.
Well, yeah.
No, we're not, no, we're not borrowing eight point six. We're only borrowing seven point nine nine eight.
Well, our, our paper says, accept low bid received from Truist in the amount of up to eight point six five.
It was approved to be up to eight point six because we were still working on final information. But the final information is at the seven point nine nine eight.
Alright.
So, so we'll be borrowing less than eight million. Yeah.
How's it want to do with the old radios?
Trade-in value, so they'll be going back to Motorola on trade-in. Yes, sir.
Which is the trade-in?
It varies on the radios. There's several different styles, and I don't have that exact figure in front of me, but there's, there's several different types of radios to be traded in.
Numbers vary from year to year. Radios you use.
They do. They increase somewhat during the years, depending on what the fire departments and police department puts, puts on the radio system.
Taking in the fire department, volunteer fire, fireman get one.
Replacing what they have already. Yes, sir. I don't, we don't really tell them where they put the radios at. Uh, the state has a little bit to do with that of how many radios have to be on trucks in order to maintain their insurance rating, different rates. But yes, sir, it's everybody's, fire departments, EMS, police departments, search department. It's, it's all a public safety in the county.
You have anything?
So, um, there's just three items that I need approval on, so it is. The, um, they're in your packet. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Um, you have the, the bid summary for the financing and the quote from Motorola, so.
I, I do want to say to the public, um, years ago, the county and I, I guess the public voted. Uh, to include a quarter cent sales tax, right, Craig? And that quarter cent sales tax was dedicated specifically toward public safety expenditures. And so, um, that quarter cent sales tax is not only paid, paid by Royan County citizens. But everyone that gets off of eighty-five and stops and eats and buys stuff, they are also paying. We've got a lot of folks that travel into the community. If someone has a heart attack at Denny's or, or, uh, Waffle House. Or if their car's broken into, or if they have an accident on eighty-five. That quarter cent sales tax is really like a user fee to folks who travel through our community. So it's not just Royan County folks are paying. So we're going to go out and we're going to borrow money. But we've got this stream of money that is there, that is paid for by everybody. Non-citizens of Royan County and citizens. If we didn't have that quarter cent sales tax, we would have to figure out a way under our budget to pay this eight or eight million dollars. So, uh, appreciate you guys doing that, and that's a big, uh, that's a big saver for us. Uh, so we appreciate that.
Yeah.
So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution and budget amendment to authorize the finance director to establish an escrow account for the loan proceeds. There a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, and make a motion to prove the, authorize the county manager to enter into an installment financing contract with Truist Financial Corporation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And make a motion to authorize a purchase of public safety radio equipment from Motorola. In the amount of seven million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. And they just had to have the one cent on top of that. So we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Been talking about this a long time, hadn't we? Yeah, seriously, yeah.
I, I want to make sure that the. Going back to, I want to make sure the bid was awarded.
Oh, I gave, I gave a wrong number, didn't I? Alright, give me the number.
Alright, sorry.
Well, we only approved seven nine four nine. Isn't it seven? Alright, seven nine nine eight. What's the rest of it? Well, don't we need to approve the financing? Okay, here's my question. We just voted on seven million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, but that's not enough. Okay, so our.
Oh, now they're.
Alright. Uh, well, that's up to, that's up to you all. Alright, seven nine nine eight. What's the rest of it? Seven million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand and one penny? No, okay. Alright, um, so then I'll make a motion that, um. We enter into a financing contract with Truist Financial in the amount of seven million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks. Alright, in December, uh, we've been notified. We usually take off the, hey, thank you, Alan and your team. Um, thank you, all you guys. Appreciate y'all. Yep, there we go. Um, we typically take off the second meeting in December. I will say, um. Always in the first meeting of the month, we meet at three. However, planning department has told me there's a large project. Um, that they're hoping that we can have a public hearing on. And I think the fifth is the first meeting in December, and we would still meet at three o'clock. Um, and, and then we could recess, but we typically have public hearings at six. So what, um, planning department is asking is if we would basically have a regular three o'clock meeting, recess till six. There's a one point three million square foot project in the county, um, that they'd like to get through before the year's out. Small building, so if you guys are okay with meeting at three, recessing, and then, uh, rea- readjourning. Uh, coming back together at six. Y'all okay to do that? Okay. Yeah, we'll do, yeah, that's fine. Till six, till six from, yeah. Yeah, there's swearing in that'll happen at three, and then we'll recess and then come back in session. Assuming, well. An election, of course. Whoever wins the election will be sworn in. Alright, go.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, you have your financial reports for, um, cumulative expenditures for September. We're up, um, seven percent over FY twenty-two, which is about two point five million. Um, on the cumulative revenues, stop me if you have any questions. We are trending at twenty-one point three percent over FY twenty-two, or about thirteen million, which we've talked about what that difference has been.
Earlier, right?
Um, and then the sales tax comparisons, um, these are through June. Um, we're still trending up sixteen percent over FY twenty-one, which is about five point one million. The monthly sales tax comparison was up about ten point three percent over June, so about three hundred and thirteen thousand. So we're still strong on our sales tax through the end of the year. Um, and then property tax was up, uh, three point seven percent over August of FY twenty-two. Um, so that's about one point nine million in collections.
Red flags for us besides, uh, looming recession, ten percent inflation.
They keep saying that. I'm waiting on the, yep. Thank you.
Alright, uh, motion to approve budget amendments. Second, all in favor say aye. And, uh, make a motion that we enter in a closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one a one. Consider approval amendments, a closed session held on October third, twenty twenty-two. In accordance with General Statute one four three, three one eight, A three for a ti- a client. Attorney-client privilege communication regarding zoning compliance, lease at the airport and settlement agreement. As soon as the doors close, we'll, we'll move on. Alright, so we're back, um, at a closed session.
Make a motion to authorize the manager for a settlement, uh, for one twenty West Ridge Road.
Alright, is there a second? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.